If you haven't signed it, you can't sign in.
I just wanted to give a heads up that there could be some things.
Okay, everyone, welcome. We're gonna start the meeting. Matt Clurk, Mr. Malloy.
I'm here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Amanda.
Here. Thank you. We have Mrs. Malternum here from Raceville. If the commissioners would agree to it, this small alternative service about the dam issue, their side of the story, maybe that, I don't know. Is that okay? Mrs. Malternum.
Thank you. I'm gonna kind of go with my own circle and try not to sway and block the sidelines. When the dam was originally decided they were gonna take out, some of that started with most around 2018. And was moving forward, they pulled out a few of the dams. Most of the residents felt that that was going to happen and be done. So we didn't say a lot because we were all for that. Then about the third quarter of 2024, my husband and I realized listening to Louie that there was some issues with the dam being taken out, and we decided to kind of find out what was going on and get everybody involved. I got Pat and everyone to give commissioners to show some documentation of the things that were happening. It has the timeline of things from the Resolution 2024-4 Metro Parks. I have some documentations on the lawsuit that Warren paid for a low head dam that cost a million dollars. I have some other documentation on there, the DLC report and a couple other things. The Stover's family out, the companies there are, the things that happened there. So what I would bring to light basically is the objections that I think that are out there. And I think there are two major objections. The smaller people that live around the dam that decided that this is personal property. They want to keep the dam there basically because they like having lakefront property. But as Commissioner Malloy pointed out to me very kindly, they own the land, they do not own the water. Water stayed owned, it should be a public access and have public recreation attached to it. By keeping the dam there, you have issues of safety, have issues of health. And you are closing it off to just the few that live in the surrounding areas. That is one of the main concerns that I, I think that that is what they use. I don't know that it's valid. Now, what I did on the papers that I gave you is I worked up a spreadsheet on the DLC report. Because I believe the DLC report is the second item that they continually use to say that the dam should stay. But if you look at the DLC report, attached to the spreadsheet I did is their list of advantages and disadvantages. It's cumbersome to look at. And every time I would look at it, so well, this is a repeat, this is the same thing here, this is, you know. So I put it on a spreadsheet so it can be side by side, what happens if the dam stays? If they modify the dam and if the dam goes? On the top 10 items that I listed, getting rid of the dam, seven, as seven of those 10 items have advantages. Modifying the dam, it shows five of them have advantages. Retaining the dam, three. Of those 10, two of those pertain to keeping the pool of water. If you take the pool of water out, retaining the dam out of eight items has one advantage. Modifying the dam has three. But removing the dam still has seven advantages over the other items. And if you look at the things that they're talking about, the seven that they retain are all the things that ODOT and the EPA said we need to do. Which is to clean out the waste, to purify the water, to let the water flow for it to become a public recreation accessory. Those things do not happen under the other two situations. They also mentioned on the D report that of course, if we keep the dam, there's minimal work to be done and little thought. That's true. But there's still gonna be general maintenance and there's still a liability. And with a million dollar payout, four towns are just paid in 2024 for settlement. That's big liability. That doesn't have to happen once or twice a year to be a bucket full of money. But it happens. And it did happen. If the dam is modified, they say there's, they gave various ways that we could fix it. Putting in a rip wrap, putting in a fish strip. They never gave any dollar amount attached to that. What it would take with the design, you know, design cost would be or anything. They just said, you could do this. And the only thing that I could look up and find on rip wraps that they're talking about using is for erosion. I've looked and looked and looked, three weeks on the internet to find a rip wrap used for low head dams. And the only ones I could find it on was laptop dams. And the problem with rip wraps, even if it does work, some of the documentation I gave you will show they're very expensive to maintain. You don't just put in all these rocks and then it just works. They have effects on the environment and they're high cost maintenance. So it's not as simple as we're just gonna modify and do this. The other things that they have on their list, which is my third complaint, are things that they put as disadvantages for moving the dam. They're all conjectures. They were saying, well, if you took it out, this could happen. If you took it out, this could happen. Well, there's a lot of things that we could say could happen if we don't take it out. So I don't think conjectures are very good statements of the disadvantage for the dam being removed. Basically, I, I still feel like me using any logic with the things that ODOT and EPA has requested of not just us, all of Ohio. If there's anything that justifies keeping that dam. Some of us that live west of the dam believe that that dam will help with our flight. That's a whole nother issue. I'm excited about it, but I do believe it will happen. Right now, that dam affects people who at west of, west of that, all the way out to Riverview Golf course in 82, loses their front nine holes. All, you know, on five. All for golf is underwater all the time when it floods. I know the Metro Parks has places all along the homing up there, but they have plenty of grubs. They go underwater. And they're not usable. Nobody could get back there if they wanted to for their flight. That's an issue for another day, which talks about losing dredging, giving the dam machines dredging and letting that water flow freely like it's supposed to flow. That will help clean up the water, that will give access to all Chobe County and other places. Which is the goal, what the whole process of taking all these dams out is. And recently, there have been some threats made against the Metro Parks. I think it's child issue. If you look at the facts, if there was anything to say that there really is a reason to keep this dam, I can understand. Taking alternative methods are mean. But to say all these things like, we're not going to give them a budget, that really doesn't affect the dam coming out. If you do not give them the budget, they will not maintain bike trails, they will not mow the grasses around Metro Park areas, they will not get the liability insurance. That's all that the budget does. It has no effect on the removal of the dam. Don't give them a budget, you're hurting all of Chobe County. Keeping the dam in my eyes for Chobe County. I think keeping the dam is catering to a small few that live around it, who want private lakefront property. These people who abuse that water, they dump rocks to reach. They admittedly immediately said they throw the whole appliances in there and now they want somebody else to clean it up. So of course, Mel Brooks is going in to give them a wastewater treatment plant. And they want everybody else then to pay to clean up what they have dumped in there. I don't think that's fair. Or if I think that it's a reason enough to keep something that is limiting the access to other people in Chobe County and benefit them. We're not here to benefit 20 houses. Bigger picture of the whole thing, not just from west us coming down, all the way down the river, it affects everything. So these are papers, I hope they give you some insight. And the other thing is, it was exciting. When every time we ask one township if they want to take the dam back and assume the liability, they say no. They want what they want, which is private lakefront property. It's not really lakefront, that's what they're thinking of it as. And they've put out signs to keep people away. And we don't want the canoeers in kayak. They put signs up around there, saying, we don't want you. But they do not want to assume any liability. They want the water, they just want to have to maintain it and they want no liability. To all our kids, can't have it all. That's what they want.
Mrs. Malternum. Commissioner Bernard and I have commented this, I mean, heard side of, you know, more township, but it's worth. Appreciate.
Well, my fear was you're really one side.
You know, I don't know, Commissioner Malloy, you've been behind this more so than anybody, you know. I don't.
She bringing, she bringing up some good points, but there's a lot of points missing, so. There's nothing that you showed, my biggest fear of this is the road. And when you look at what happened in New Philadelphia, I was there, I saw it, and then looked at the site. We have a, we have a turn there and the dam slows the flow of the river around the turn. You remove that dam, I have to side with our former engineer and our current engineer even, and, and the other studies that are out there. That that river picks up speed around the bend like on a NASCAR track. The guy's going to turn one or turn two, they pick up speed for the straightaway. When it picks up speed when it makes that corner without that dam, you're gonna undercut the road and there's a very good chance of us losing West Market Street. Then we're into $5 million that we have to pay out of taxpayers' funds to fix a road and shut down safety services. That's my biggest fear of it for one.
But I don't think you can compare New Philadelphia to, I looked up and I researched it and all the concrete piles and that, that bridge and that were cracked. They were cracked before that dam came out, yes. Water currents coming around there when they took the dam up aggravated that. But it was an issue they had to deal with anyways and shouldn't deal, was dealt with because it was already a safety issue. So comparing New Philadelphia to Leavittsburg is not the same. And I'm not sure if DLC is telling you that the water level is gonna go so low, they saying their thing is gonna go down to two inches. And I don't think that has an issue.
Well, and then if that's my other concern is if you do lower the river, the residents do own the banks in the middle. And they could do what they did in Lake County, just fence it up right to the water if they want to. Which was in Lake County with the fishermen, they did that and they don't allow any access. So as soon as you get out of your canoe, as soon as you get out of your kayak, if it's low water, you're trespassing and they give you a rest. So that's, that's a concern that hasn't been brought up yet, but the people do own the river and they have the right fence right up to the middle of the river if they want to do that and shut access off.
They don't, state of Ohio, I don't know that I brought it with you, says that they have to allow access points every so often, get kayakers to get out. That is part of the water regulations of the state of Ohio. They have to allow them to do that. The going down to two inches is DLC goes one side to the other. So they go down in two inches or it's gonna be this massive flow of water.
But if you look at Summit Street right now, we're middle of winter, not in the middle of summer, when it's hot, there are parts there right now where it's less than six inches.
Well, then let's take our dam out and rest the rivers and everybody will have water.
So I, I disagree and I don't like the fact too, we are, we are doing sewage control there. But there is raw feces that's being dumped right in the river right now that will be on the banks. Our sanitary engineer who's here, our health commissioner said it's gonna be a health hazard, who's gonna deal with that for the next three years?
Dumping it into the water and then they're going canoeing in it.
Yeah, but, but once it's airborne, it's a whole different hell.
All right, Commissioner.
Mr. Charlie, I've been in several township meetings on the D. First of all, I don't think that issues will be solved here, but I really, it's gonna work, so. I'm not gonna say the whole lot, but I do have one major concern that Commissioner Malloy has. Something happens to that road, that bridge, it's gonna be held responsible for. That's a major concern and that shouldn't concern everybody. You have a gray school right down the road, if that road goes down, safety forces can't get to that school. That's a major concern. So I think we all need to look at this and just, and, and let's see where, where it's gonna go and all of us have concerns, you have some good points and you have some points that I agree with and some points I don't agree with. Unfortunately, it's been handed, Commissioner Anderson might solve it or they may have to take a hard look at this. If we can, and, and just see what's best for the community.
And I, and I did say about the budget thing, that, that came from me as far as defunding them. We have no, they did all this without consulting board commissioners at all.
I don't think that's true.
They are, they are, they are their own entity. And they are funded by us. They went to the taxpayers and asked for levy and taxpayers said no, 70% of voters said no, you're not getting a levy for, for your metro parks. They did get a lot of grant, there are a lot of good properties they have, a lot of people utilize the properties. But we're in a situation now with that same board where they've got more than 25 miles of bike trail. They're starting to degrade and now they're telling us they need millions of dollars from us to resurface the bike trail that they got the grant money in and did. Again, not involving the commissioners, some of the park board did on their own. We're gonna be paying the bill for a lot of the decisions this board is making and they're not even communicating with us. Or attending regular meetings or doing anything at all, they're telling us now. We deal with their lawyers and don't, we're not gonna deal with you. They don't wanna deal with us and, and the only, the only tool we have is, and we've already got complaints, the trash hasn't been cleaned up, my grass hasn't been mowed at Canoe City. There's, all over the county it has been maintained because their budget is so low traditionally that they pay their executive director and at, at the last meeting, with a little bit of money they do get from the county, they had on their agenda to give them a rate. Which is taking more money out of the budget, which is less money for services to mow the grass and maintain what they have and pay their lawyer bills. I, I don't know how they think they're gonna exist this way, being hostile the way that they are, non cooperative toward, toward county government. And right now, they've got the public against them, they're never gonna get another levy, if they wanna try for a levy. They're never gonna get support from any government entities, so yeah, they may get their dam taken down. That's all they're gonna get and in the future, then what happens? What happens when they come to us next year and they have another hole in the bike trail and they got part of the bike trail shut down? And they need, they need another $400,000 or $280,000, I think the last hole cost on the bike trail that they're coming to the general fund taxpayers to pay the bills for their decisions. They're not making good decisions in some areas. That's why I brought up, the only thing we can do is, is to defund part of their budgets so that he doesn't have enough time to go around and deal with damn stuff and things where they're not cooperating.
That's fine. One other thing I have to remember is the metro parks are answering to ODOT and the EPA.
They are, they are not. The EPA deputy director said he doesn't care if the dam goes or stays, it's our decision. It's a local decision.
Because money has already been spent and you have to find a way, you know, that you can drop it all. Money that has been spent has to be repaid.
It will not, it will not. We had a meeting last week, I had a talk with the governor's office, there's three options they gave us. Repay what they, or what they have minus whatever they've already spent. They, we're not gonna be on the hook for any money they've already spent. Governor's office, EPA director said, they won't waive that. Or we can reallocate that grant to rip wrap or an alternative for the dam, portage around the dam, something that's gonna still create access and make both sides happy. Or three, come up with another alternative and it costs more, they would entertain another grant to go along with. Right now, the alternatives are all in the fund and if they want, if we wanna back out of it, the park board wants back out of it. They can back out. Those are the options were given to us. The park board now has refused the meeting with the EPA director in the governor's office. When we were told to set up the Zoom meeting with the deputy director of EPA, the park board now doesn't want to. Cause they know they're gonna get the answer, they don't want here.
Commissioner.
Julie Green, Chobe County Planning. I started working on the western reserve agreement, part of the Great Ohio Highway agreement in 2001. And worked on it for approximately 14 years. And during that time, I just wanted to make sure that the facts were clear on this. The Board of Chobe County Commissioners basically asked the planning commission to be the lead on that project. The Metro Parks at that time did not have staff and there are probably, and I know that you weren't here, none of you were here, but there are probably 100 general actions of support for that. And part of that funding to create the bike trail is called congestion mitigation air quality, it's a federal aid program. And one of the requirements for that is a commitment to long-term maintenance. And that was explained to the commissioners in the past. I just wanted to reiterate that that is something that needs to be stated again. It's, I understand that the Metro Parks are their own unit and I'm not here to talk about the dam issue, I know it's very controversial, although that also has been on the project for, I wanna say, 35 years, they've been working on getting the low head air quality. So at, in the regional level, but I can speak to the bike trail because I don't believe anybody else that knows more about it. And I know for a fact that the board commissioners has passed many resolutions, have signed many grant agreements regarding the construction and the installation. What's unfortunate is something that I've been trying to get funding for, and again, this three days old. Is I think that we should have had, you know, long ago, a coordinator to do volunteer work for Metro Parks to be able to have some sort of long-term planning in place. Having a dedicated funding source in place. I don't recall the levy statistics of why it did or did not pass. What I can say in a good way is that when they do survey all of the parking areas around the bike trail, you get people from all over the country. And Beth could probably talk more about that, but it is a huge recreation tourism draw. It's part of a four-county regional effort that again, I've been working on since 2001. Originated in 1988. So I understand this is a controversial issue and I, I truly appreciate everybody's views, but I do think that it's important to recognize the regional significance, not just the bike trail, but the Chobe County. And try to come to some.
Right now, like what we have on the table, I guess, is how we got dragged into this, is the township reached out to us and said, help us, our residents came, gave us a petition with 800 signatures, the trustees don't want it, the residents. Did have a couple of meetings, one of them, they turned in 800 signatures of people that wanted the dam to stay. We hooked into it as a board. We, we tried to find where there was any type of partnership agreement, anything in the past where they came to us and said, we wanna remove the dam when we signed on a memorandum of support or anything, we never did as far as our board commissioners goes. But then we did hear from our health commissioner, our sanitary engineer, our highway engineer and the trustees, so we, we as a board, I think, have to listen to all sides, as we have been too. We understand the flooding issue, that is a big issue, that we as a board have to assist with you in doing whatever we can to alleviate flooding in Raceville. There are feeder creeks, there are other things that need dredge, there are trees that need cut in certain areas that, you know, that's a bigger, a bigger issue as far as that. But the, the argument of the safety, one person's drowned that they can tell in history over the years, so they say, well, it's a safety hazard. 75 people drowned in Skeeter Lake and nobody's saying, let's drain this thing. One person in 100 years has drowned over that dam. People know risk when you're, if you're a kayaker, canoeer, you know the risk. With rip wrap, that our trustee Yoho, he made a good point last week. And he said, that might be a tourist draw, we have rip wrap, people could start their canoe trail and go down the rip wrap, go down the rocks. That might be a draw for people, like going down a sliding or a ski or going down the moats. There's no other area where they can do that and maybe people that are in Louisville or Struthers wanna come up to Chobe County just to do the rocks, do the rapids, do the rip wrapping. There's, there's a point that can be made with that. We also know there is silt sedimentation for miles. When you have 10 foot of water for all those years and all this stuff being washed in there. What happens with the safety risk when a kayaker gets out? When the water is low and they sink up to their waist in muck, that they're not gonna dredge, so only gonna dredge about 100 yards back from the dam. You're not going 11 miles to Lake Milton. That's an issue too, when you narrow the water and then you got all the muck in the middle of the water, it's there. It's a fact, people can walk out there and Summit Street now and see that you go up to your knees. In muck, no one's gonna do anything about that. So there are a lot of big issues with that. But we do appreciate you coming here and speaking, we haven't had very much input from anybody else, it's all been remove the dam, remove it, or, or I'm sorry, save the dam, save the dam, save the dam from the people in Chobe Township. This is a bigger issue, it's a bigger metro parks issue apparently now that we gotta look at. And right now, we are, I feel there is a rift with us and them that has been caused because of this issue and like I said, when they sent us an email like they did the other day that says, don't deal with us anymore commissioners, deal with our lawyers. Something has to be done.
I agree. Okay, well, it's a small term thing. We will be looking at this here down the road, I'm sure. And I guess we're gonna have to make some decisions as moving forward, we're gonna on the, as far as work measures.
Or we may, we may do nothing, we may not be involved in it at all.
Yeah, my understanding also is that now, if retain legal counsel and that there's possibly a lawsuit.
They retain legal counsel because the Chobe County officials are going to sue them.
No, he's talking about Warren Township. No, he's talking about Warren Township.
Yeah. But, um, we really do have to move. We got a long agenda. No, no, you're more than one. Yes. Thank you again for stopping here today. We appreciate it. Um. Okay. So we're going to move forward with the agenda. Do we have any other, before that, do we have any other groups? Yes.
Julie Green, Tormal County Planning Commission. I just asked to go first because we're on separate deadlines. Um, items nine through thirteen are pertaining to the Tormal County Planning Commission. Um, Commissioner. If you want, I can just explain them or I don't want to, but what we typically do. Okay, right. So item nine is this standard satisfaction mortgage. This relates to our home program that our. Office of Ministers on behalf of the Board of Tormal County Commissioners. Item ten is to adopt a resolution authorizing us to apply for a HMGP. Free application through the Ohio EMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. This is related to our duties as to let plain administrator forth on behalf of. Item eleven is the same. It's a different funding source. It's a different free application. Therefore, we ask for two separate resolutions. Item twelve is to. Well, actually, item ten. Just for your, for your knowledge, we did submit the free application. It was due yesterday. But the, the resolution is being ratified. I guess that's the only change I would have and I should have thought that yesterday at least. But the item eleven, uh, we will be submitting that on our first. Uh, item number twelve is to authorize change order one for TK excavating. This is the final adjustment quantities for Townsend Avenue. Uh, we worked in coordination with Liberty Township and Tormal County and Peter Saunders. And it was to address storm drainage deficiencies because they're on. And Gary, do you have anything to add to that, Gary?
No, I wish we were able to do that.
Thank you very much. Item thirteen is to publish a combined notice. This is the result of our meeting once there's a new adjournment regarding. The Pendleton Gilmer sanitary sore Gary. So I completed the EA in record three-day time so that we can get this moving. That's why I need to return to the ECA, not allow us every, anyone. Keep things moving on. And that's all.
Thank you for, uh, sharing most of my agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner, for letting me go.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Commissioner, uh, Bob Meyer, annual controller of the Tormal County Sanitary and衟能s. Um, I just passed out to you that regarding, um, our water rates while on. I guess, so first I'll start off, I'll give you a little history on our water rates. The last rate increase combined was, was come back in two thousand and eleven. And those rates passed in two thousand and eleven, the final rate increase occurred in two thousand and fifteen, which was ten years. Also notable in two thousand and fifteen, Senator, you know, stop passing along. Uh, bulk water supply increases to, um. Two thousand and seventeen, Scott Burner and I, amongst consultants, we started to do a re-study. Two thousand and seventeen, it's term involving solving not rates in two thousand and seventeen. In two thousand and nineteen, it was the first year that we started to show loss in our water. Which led to a rate study being completed in two thousand and twenty. And during two thousand and twenty-two, we had sent the agenda to the commissioners to increase water rates. They never appeared on the agenda, and we took not. In two thousand and twenty-three, instead of increasing rates for the water, we combined water funds, we combined them into a single fund. But this essentially gives, allowed us to use, uh, carryover balance to not increase rates. In two thousand and twenty-four, the combined water fund lost one point five million dollars. Um, this is a direct result of nine million dollars a year over year decrease in the bulk water cost from our suppliers. Our suppliers are these two-hand signal piles and, uh, new faults. In two thousand and twenty-five, we expect our bulk water expenditures to fill up even more compared to two thousand and twenty-four. Because we have been getting higher rates, we added one thousand. Uh, and getting a full year of higher rates in two thousand and twenty. So if I look at our bulk water costs from two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five, they are one point five million dollars. We had to show we used one point five million to control our proxies. But the reality is we cannot afford to, we need to pass along our bulk water. And at this point, we can probably go two more months before we're out. So with that, we really have two options. We can either raise rates or be giving money to the general. I mean, money from the general fund should probably not be used for enterprise fund. It should only be used in electric bills. The general fund should be people that are all. Twenty twenty-five, we estimate loss of one point seven five million. So I'd be asking somewhere between one or two million in the general fund just to be operating. We really talked about layoffs. There's really no option to lay off. There's really quite a lot of what we have. It's our bulk water cost, our what is driving sixty percent of our expense, studying municipalities in mind. I don't need a rate increase tomorrow, but in the next week or two, I'm going to need something. Come here ahead of time, the partners can contact you, nice meetings. This is the reality of what it is, not passing along rates.
And that is my question. Why, you know, how did we end up here? I mean, anybody in business, I know if you're, if you're sinking. These types of things, even if we would have done this. And, you know, if, if we would have even had an opportunity to systematically. A little chunk at a time, but now we're, we're going to lose one point seven five mil and we got a new board of commissioners here. It's kind of holding a bag of rocks. What do you do? Commissioner, I don't know what you care.
Well, I, I agree. And the other thing is, um, when you guys combine with water districts. I have a problem with that because you took some solid districts and literally you stole their money. And put it in, you combined all those nine districts. All you did is kick the can down the road. Now the cans has nowhere to go. Commissioner Hernandez and I, we walked in twenty days and you're telling us that you need a rate increase immediately. Why didn't you guys come to the other board when they had the money, saying, look, we need a rate increase?
And I can't expect you to buy it when it passed in December.
Actually, yeah, when you have twenty, when you have ten years, when you haven't had a rate, rate increase and your costs, they keep going up. And then you tell me you need one point seven million dollars for twenty twenty-five, what happens in twenty twenty-six and you need more money? So Commissioner Hernandez and I. You know, we walked through the door and all you're asking for is more money, more money, more money.
I just don't know where we're going to get it, Commissioner.
I, I don't either.
We, I, I don't know.
You know, especially when we hear, well, how great the other board was. Well, this doesn't come to the other board, but you're great.
I've heard a lot of things about the old board, not excluding Commissioner Malloy. This was prior to Commissioner Malloy. But these are the kind of things that we're going to have to look at to straighten out. And, you know, we can't expect. If they're going under, we can't go under, but we're going to, we're going to have to make a decision to do something. I just don't know what the answer is. We don't have the money in the general. That kind of money in the general to fund that.
We do part of it because you and I look at, but.
Yes.
And all we hear was, well, we didn't have to raise that, we didn't have to do this, we didn't have to do that. Now it's thrown into our lap.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what the answer is. Commissioner Malloy, do you have any?
You have a. I, I know there was talk last year. And we, we told Gary, we charged him, when he combined the districts, cut every penny you can. Uh, and now we're, we're kind of in the same boat. The can's been kicked down the road for a while to not raise rates. And I can say the same thing. I, I don't want to raise. We just raised sewer. The, the old, an old board. Raised sewer, but didn't make it go into effect until three years later. And we got hit with that last year when I came on the board. And it's like, all of a sudden our sewer rates go up ten dollars. Well, it doesn't sound like much. But on a fixed income, believe me, I got the phone calls on it. This aggregate right now. And, and this is something to bring up, a good time to bring it up. The, the electric aggregate program, we just resigned us up, same company we had before, although it's a different name on their bill. Everybody got letters this month. That says your rates are basically going up seventy percent from what they were, the four point. Three, five, or whatever it was, four point four, five to now seven point nine zero. That's true. But the first energy rate now is twelve nine nine. If we're not in aggregates, we had to keep us in an aggregate. We shopped it around last year. All the bits that came in, uh, we went with the lowest bid that we came in, which happened to be the same company we're with. I just checked on my phone just this morning. Every other aggregate program, others over eight percent right now. So when we locked in with these people in December. We got a rate and fortunately we only locked in there for fourteen months instead of three years. So we have to hope now with the new administration, energy prices go down. So that's something too. People, but what I'm getting at is. All of us, including everyone in the state, we're going to pay higher electric bills now too. Not because we want to, not because the county's getting anything out of it, but because that's the world market that we're in right now. And, and electricity went up for everybody. His coal mines went down. They converted to natural gas. There's mandates and now energy prices are higher. Uh, so we got to cross our fingers on that and hope that over the next fourteen months, that will sink. But I got phone calls all week, I'm sure as you did too. People get this in their bill and they're like, why is there a seventy percent increase? Because there could have been a ninety percent increase and we fortunately we got it to seventy percent. But we had to do something for the citizens here. They'd be paying the twelve point nine nine instead of the seven point nine oh.
While we're on that point, Commissioner, um, I would suggest that on the commissioner's website. That we supply that explanation to the residents because I'm getting flooded with calls. I know you're getting emails. Danny's getting the, Commissioner Malloy's getting emails. We're going to need to allow the residents to know that this is what happened. This is why. They locked in before us, they locked in the best rate that they could get, uh, who, you know, who presented to them those rates. So it's.
And it's the same company we signed with. Today's rates are over eight. So when we locked in seven point nine, the rates are still going up.
But I don't want to get off the subject of the water rate. We got to stay on the water. So. You know, what? What do you do? I mean. Bob, you said, uh, in one week.
I think, I think the first thing was you just start, start making politics, you know, and I think that's what was being done out here. Now you and I struggle with the mess.
All right. Well, Danny too, because Danny, Danny wasn't a part of the water.
That was twenty twenty-two, that was for me.
But I, I agree. I agree.
Well, I, I mean, I, you know, I'm going to lay out the facts as I see them and, uh, they may not like it, but you know, I'm going to say. Whatever I find out, what I see, that's what I'm going to talk about. And I don't like this. You know, you guys wait ten years and then you come in and you hit it with this emergency.
Is there a way, Gary, we're buying water, we're buying water from Niles. Niles is selling it to us. And we're paying an increased Niles is charging it up for a meander. And I, I've said this before, why don't we go right to the source and cut out the middle guy to keep the rate slow? Why do we have to buy water from Niles? And instead of buying it directly from MBSD?
Commissioner, I, I was the president of the MBSD for twenty-one years. Matt Boyer, I'm the attorney at Senator Engineers Office. I, I, I laid after his president, you know, at the MBSD for twenty-one years. The MBSD was created under by Ohio Stat Chapter sixteen and fifteen, out of two cities, Ohio City, East County. Only the city now. McDonald does have a contract. This is a, in this case, you are a municipality. Uh, you're, the prices being charged for water have been increased by your provider. So each is very simple. You just pass those increases on to the consumers. You have no control over the price of water. Uh, so you're basically only passing on, um, what's been. By the Jew, but, but it's, it's, it's just a situation that if these, if these, uh, water rates have been increased periodically as. As the prices went up, you would not be, you wouldn't be here today.
Right.
It's something that has to be done.
So somebody didn't do their job and asking for ratings.
Yeah, but well, and, you know, I'm not going to put it on Bob or Gary. These guys do a great job, but it's. The former administration that didn't take the.
They have passed.
Well, I think they did. They did. They did, Commissioner.
Wait, what year? What is the last year you asked?
Number twenty-two, Commissioner.
Yeah, but you didn't put it, it wasn't formal, but it.
We sent it out and opened it. It didn't make you end up.
Why did you ask for it to be on the agenda?
We did. That's why we brought it up, but. This was a rate study that determined that this would have, um, been able to.
So from twenty fifteen, you waited until twenty twenty-two, the actual rate.
So, uh, yes, Commissioner, that's what we realized that we couldn't maintain it anymore.
Well, you realize that when you, you had to combine all nine water districts, what kind of how it was used to.
Yeah. We started the rate, the rate study in two thousand and twenty-one. We realized that prior to your, that was the water district. And, um. We, we brought it to the commissioner. It was not received, uh. In a good light, but I guess it's difficult to say that. Yeah, but it was decided to, uh, help the work for a length. Districts that you need to combine all of the districts, find district in order to.
Oh, that did cause a rate increase for everybody. That's all that.
Oh, Commissioner, we didn't raise any rates.
Well, you are, now, I'll, I'll ask, how, how, how much money was in Allen's district before you, before you combined?
Uh, I can find that for you.
I'd like to see that.
There's some of them were struggling somehow.
And the ones who are struggling will be paying a super high increase right now. The outlying areas.
Well, the reason, because they kept up with whatever the costs were and the other districts were.
Well, they had to bulk too. They had, it's, it's, but Allen had the quantity of water rate.
What it was, and that's basically, all water rate is what determines what the different rates were in the different districts. They were, uh, were the Niles waters. So that's why you have a different.
So this rate increase that you're proposing, what's it going to cost the banding for?
Uh, it depends on, on which district you live in.
Well, no, what they all should be, they're all not going to be the same. Got to get rates for different people.
Uh, that's where we would like to, uh, have one thing where it's all.
So give me a high and give me a low. What's the highest rate? What's the lowest rate?
An approximate value would be about twenty-five dollars. For household or an average user of four thousand dollars.
Say a year.
Based on a sewer.
Well, that's why.
Yes, it's basically, yeah, but they still have to pay the bill and the sewer rates going up. So someone that has a sixty or ninety dollar. Bill now is going to have anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollar bill. And then it's going to have to go up again next year because this only takes us to twenty twenty-five. And then it's gonna have to go up again next year because this only takes us to twenty twenty-five.
Well, it, it, it looks like we have no other choice. Unfortunately, to do something. We're gonna have to do something. So, but you know, we're gonna have to. Uh, it's a very misfortunate, but. We, if it, like, like Attorney Blair said. If it costs us that much and we're losing money, we're gonna have to do it. It's just a misfortune. That it was not looked at years ago and systematically. Raised like you would do, right? And it wouldn't be as hard on people. Now it becomes one of those things where. Property tax.
Misfortunate.
Electric rates, water rates. At some point, we're gonna have to really. Organize and keep these things in order so that we can do this systematically. So it's not so hard on the people. But, um.
One of the items I have. How I should raise. Is, I, I'm certified by the county. I, I do believe you. Every year, I do. Revenue expense for an apartment. And I can tell you what you lost money and what interest we made. I believe we can see that. Every February, you can issue adjusted rates every year for how. How I spend. Uh, in, in times you guys, I brought a water superintendent, assistant water superintendent. And we have naked sales that. Heard that, that we need to be working on and we're not working on that because we're paying our bulk water. So there's even another layer to it. We're just trying to, because right now, we have infrastructure that we need to. Work on. And we just look at comparable rates around us. I mean, the high liberty pays twenty dollars per thousand. Right now, we have how we're paying six hundred and six. So there's a thirteen dollar difference between what you're paying liberty to have. Allen's level. That's why we're running that. We have.
Yeah, but Howland's district is solid.
Howland's district lasted the last three hundred and.
That's because you combined?
No, Howland's district lasts three hundred and one, two thousand. It's, uh, it's in the packet. So I believe they kind of talked about Howland, but there is some mixture of the. Sewer rate that Howland is looking at. I mean, we had our Howland's field district. And there was, that's where a lot of water came, a lot of sewage came. Our water district on the back page of your packet, I've broken down by system. And you can see Howland Water revenue is one point three nine nine, spent one point seven nine nine within Howland. So Howland lost four hundred and fifty. Within Howland. So that's. The, the only district we even, what we're dealing with about the student district is twenty bucks. Two, one district, we had the revenue of ninety-seven thousand. Water purchase, we made that ninety-seven thousand, cost us a hundred and twenty-six. So if you bought water, you paid for the hundred and twenty-six, you know, we see the obvious.
These are the proposals here.
So the, so what we're ultimately looking for is a rate to everybody in the district at twelve dollars and fifty cents. And a five dollar R I F P, which you currently charge two, but five. Which gives a blended rate of a four thousand gallon average, which is the chart below. So it puts us at thirteen seventy-five. And that's kind of right in the middle of local values. And my, my request would be that we do this, that we get a student here. Um, Matt and, uh, Ron Watson Superintendent both have some ideas upon bringing, you know, firms to work it. But are shipping and we can present that to the commission to go forward.
So Lordstown, Youngstown, and Gerard pay much more than that, what you're requesting, because they're on different. With different companies. They don't buy from us.
Well, so most, now there's a column that I put producers or purchases. So typically the producers have a little bit. Because we don't own a water treatment facility, we all water district people. If everything we do is marked up to us.
So literally the people in Niles, even though we buy the water from them, we're paying a lot more than we'll be paying the last couple of years. Citizens of Niles are paying more than what the county.
That is an outside, that's, that's the outside.
Those people living in the family, I said, well, they're. And, uh, commissioners, our service area agreement with these cities supply the water. The rates are in the service area agreement. They're all based on cities inside rates. So it protects us to say you're not gonna raise our rate without your own citizens also. Uh, showing some of that burden. So, but cities, they have. Due to inflation, uh, I don't know what other factors it is, but they had to increase their inside rates and that escalated into us. And, and that's what it is. Just the bulk water cost has gone up. It, it's gone up from two thousand fifteen to two thousand, uh, twenty-four. I mean, it's gone up from probably three point eight or five point eight or two bus. And back in two thousand fifteen. Uh, if equivalent rate across all the districts was eighty thirty-seven per thousand. And two thousand seventeen, fifty-three percent of, two thousand fifteen, fifty-three percent of that. Rate is going towards the bulk water purchase, fifty-three percent. Now it's seventy-five percent. Of the, uh, rates is going toward the purposes of bulk water. And if we break it down into. Break this down into it. If you look in two thousand fifteen, on the eight thirty-seven. Our average rate across, it's just here, four forty-six of that is going toward the bulk water purchase. And we were running the department on three dollars and ninety one cents per dollar. Within two thousand twenty-four. Six hundred, six dollar and twenty-eight cents of the, uh, rate is going toward the bulk water purchase and we're. Trying to run the department on two dollars and six cents per thousand. That's, that's. How much we have to be able to operate, maintain and pay debt on two oh six. So this sort of shows that it's the bulk water, but still, uh. The increases that have gone on through years.
In your packets, there is. And it shows you the acceleration of. The bulk water. As you do look, the city of Falls from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two charged us the same. In twenty-three, it jumped up, but then in twenty-five, it jumped up again. He started. They're paying five fifty an hour, they're paying five fifty an hour, they're paying nine twenty for a thousand gallons. So our rate for the Braysville district is. Currently nine twenty-six and we're buying a thousand gallons for nine. And with water quality, we have flushed waters and purchase more water than we actually sell. So Braysville district, just based on the bulk water cost, we're gonna lose money, we're gonna pay more. Saltwater, we're gonna see. And every district we can see in the last two years, last three years, the price is. So this isn't, we didn't do anything ten years ago. We're last few, few years that's come in.
But you're asking the residents on fixing, uh, paying higher fuel bills, higher, wow. Protrium bills, alright? And now you want to hit them with this margin increase. And, and where are they supposed to get them from?
Commissioner, way to look at this.
You're not. You look at it, I look at it in two different places.
Okay, but the way, the way I look at it, the others, the way I look at it is that the price for water. Person, the, the people that increase the water prices are providers. All you're doing now is passing that on to some.
You want to add on a ten-year problem?
I, 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 I understand. I, I agree. It should have been passed on as the rates went up. Each year, as a district increased the rates, as the, as each of the providers increased the rates, those rates should have been increased. To the consumer. That didn't happen.
Did you guys sit at a table like this, like you're sitting at this table, this board and ask? And make the same presentation? No. Did I sit at a table, did anybody? Was the same presentation made to the same, to the other board of commissioners? I mean, you walked through the door and you hit us with a rate increase. Here you go.
There, there's something else we're not looking at. Also, Commissioner, I had a meeting last year with M B S D. They need fifty million dollars to secure their dam. Right now their dam is, is ranked very low nationally as far as safety. And they're also looking for fifty million. I think they have thirty million in their account. They need another twenty million just to stabilize the dam. Which, if they don't get state or federal funding on that, that's something that could pass on. Rates in the Niles and to, and to us ultimately down the road also. That M B S D is looking at right now. So this is a bigger problem.
Pay our water and sewer rates.
What's that?
So, so we're just gonna be working to pay our water and sewer rates.
Right, we have no, where, where else are we gonna get the water? It isn't like we got another alternative, but the, unless, I mean, do we have other alternatives? Would Aqua Ohio be cheaper? Would, uh, mosquito be cheaper? Would, is there anything we could do? Reinvent the wheel? If we're gonna make a big change like this, is there a way? Maybe, Commissioner, you could sit down, have some special meetings and look at the whole big picture and.
Commissioner, you know the problem. They didn't raise the rates ten years ago. Now they're walking through the door saying this right now. That's what I had.
Uh, Commissioner, you also have to remember back in two thousand fifteen, we had a different administration.
You know, I heard that. You know what? How long have you been there? So I don't want to hear that excuse. How long you been here?
I've been there.
Okay, you could have brought it up. I, I don't want to hear about who was there. You know what? You guys could have brought these rate increases anytime you wanted to.
Bottom line is now, we're, 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 we're where we're at. So we're gonna have to, uh. We're gonna have to do something about it. And we like to be. Passing it on to our residents. I know, but. You know, we have no choice. I don't, we have no other choice. We have no other means of.
I, I don't want to see rate increases anyway, shape or form. I don't know where else we can get to.
Well, maybe we make somebody else's account.
Oh, like you said, whether they paid it over the last increase over the last couple of years, that's more money people were paying on their fixed income last couple of years. Fortunately, they didn't have to pay it the last so many years. A lot of people probably thankful that they didn't have that rate. Increase last year, the year before, the year before that. Unfortunately, it hits now. Eventually the buck has to stop somewhere. And when it gets to that point, when we could raise taxes on everybody right now, so that we don't have to raise them big in the future. But that's not the way to budget or do business. And it's just raising things because we can't.
Okay, so we'll have to, we'll have to, um, is this? Be on the agenda next week?
So I would like it, uh, if we're gonna raise rates, takes a little bit of time with the computer system. Um, so you, you, like, if it's effective on March first, I believe the agenda I will have in August. Two weeks, the first, if not, it's just three weeks.
Before, before I would vote on any type of rate increase, which I don't want to do, I, I think. I would like to have more meetings with you myself. Other commissioners would like to meet with you to see. There's anything that, that twelve fifty is what you're looking at? If there's any other changes, any other places in there, we can make adjustments to lessen that burden. I think we owe the taxpayers to. To see, not to get, get down the road any further. If it needs to be twelve fifty, but if we can get it to ten or we get it to some and save money now. In hopes of better economy down the road, then that might be the way to go, just like we did with the lecture.
But the problem is, Commissioner, is I think in twenty twenty-six, they're gonna come back in and ask for another rate. This just gets us through.
Well, if, if Niles charges us more than twenty twenty-six.
They already know, they already know that they're gonna leave more money in twenty twenty-six. They're just not saying. They're just saying this is gonna get us through twenty twenty-five. Then next year, you're gonna come back in, you're gonna have to raise it again.
That's it, old Commissioner.
I, I guess that's the errorized issue, right? That, that's the issue. Are we gonna leave on home in twenty twenty-six? We don't really know, but.
On the answer.
Lives are getting older. Infrastructure's gonna get older again.
So then, every, what, what we, that's where I think it's packing, but that it should be discussed. That way it's not ever ten years.
And it should have been discussed in twenty fifteen.
I wasn't telling you.
I wasn't either.
Okay, we're, the commissioners are gonna discuss this. Or we. Talk about any agenda item. Thank you. Um, Eric, thank you. Do we have any other, any other, um?
Comments from Sheriff's Department?
We don't want to keep you here all day. We gotta link it in here.
Fortunately, the public states your name and who you represent.
Sam Louderman's a judge at Temple County Family Court. So I don't know why I'm here. I think this is an actual question. Um, I'm not in charge of our. Computers or anything like that. I had my way, I travel. Uh, but apparently our server that runs our security camera system throughout the whole facility. Twelve years old. That was brought to our attention by someone in data department who said, who went out and asked for. Quotes, quotes, I don't know if you guys have copies of this. Apparently, he didn't make courtesy copies, but I'll leave this. Big copies later. Apparently that amount is twenty thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. And like I said, they told us this. I found out about, I read this thing actually this morning when I got to the office. Um. Why it took, oh, the current surround line, it's thirteen point two years old. Why it's that old? I have no idea. Uh, but it was brought to our attention and apparently we need new one. Um, to be told, probably you'll need all new cameras as well, because my dad used to say, you put a two dollar jockey on a million dollar horse, you're still gonna lose. So you like that, don't you, Commissioner? Uh, you know, our cameras are terrible. Now, the question be, do we need it right now? I don't know. That's probably more, uh, uh, Mr. Anfer, uh, question. I, I guess the question is, or the answer is, it could die today, it could die tomorrow. My, it's, this is not the hill. I'm here to die and beg for twenty thousand dollars. Problem we have is, though, it does run our attention center. So if that would go down, that would create a problem. Now, I know Commissioner Bernard and I were talking prior, just when we walked into this room, about seeking grants for that. I am, I am all for that, um, if, if you guys want to do that. Now, I know our funding sources primarily. That we get our grants from, from Supreme Court, Ohio, or D Y S, uh, Division U Services. Or, you know, uh, basically. The equivalent to the adult penises. Uh, D Y S gives us money for programming. They do not give us very much of any money for what. Uh, Supreme Court has issued us technology grants. The technology grants are primarily for innovative things. We, it's, I know the new commissioners are where we're doing an e-filing project where our. Filing system will all be electronic filed. And, and actually, another thing that I'm really not. Crazy about, but it's a statute and it has to happen. So Supreme Court has provided us somewhere between forty, fifty thousand dollars to do that. I, I know that at one point we asked, when I first got into office. Uh, they asked for some, uh, through a tech grant through Supreme Court, they asked for scanners. And I told them, I said, I already know the answer is gonna be no, because I've been to the Supreme Court and they say things like that. Those are things that should come. Those are things that should come from the Commissioners. If they feel the need, they should provide them. Uh, so I don't know that our funding sources that we typically go to can give us a grant. Now, I guess that would be Mr. Anafford's question. How long does he think this thing's gonna last before it dies? I think maybe we have time to look for some grants. I don't know where you'd look. Uh, maybe they have some ideas, uh, but that, that's kinda where this, this whole thing's at. And like I said, the only reason I'm here is because it was passed off to me because whoever asked for these quotes sent us department heads junk. I don't know, like I said, I think it's a waste of my time here when I don't even know what the heck this thing really does at the end of the day, except shoot some pictures on the screen. But, that being said, I will ask for that if you think we need time or we can get some grants, hey, I'm all for it. You got some, you got some good to say, no?
I have some good to say. We also have a place to discuss.
Yes.
I'm Scott Hobbett, Department of Municipalities. Uh, we did budget for this in our budget, by the way, on previous quotes. Five thousand. So, it is a, but...
Do you think there's a capital or actually part of the company?
Uh, I think a cap.
Yeah, I'm a lot of things. You're listed at the cap.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just one of the, yeah, but...
And let me ask you a question of your, uh, your, uh, it was brought to my attention recently too, you had the new uh, security system there as far as the metal detector.
Correct.
And you have deputies there, and someone said you had asked for more deputies or more police presence. Is there a way we can orchestrate a little there? Can you get by with what you've had? And then apply some of the money we would put in the Sheriff's Department into the system?
Be perfectly honest with you? No. And I don't wanna state my reasons for that on the record, but there, there are reasons for that.
Yeah.
And and I, you know, I, this is probably something Sheriff can be involved with. Uh, but I have a lot of concerns. I'm talking about it prior here. I basically fell on that. Here's what I see. Now, I know this, I'm not, I, you brought it up, so...
Oh, we don't wanna make it any less safe. I'm just...
Well, okay, if you walk across the street, I guarantee you at any given time, there's six deputies sitting in front of you. Most of the people that walk in and out of that building, that would cause harm to somebody. Usually, they're coming in with cameras. And that, they're escorted by another bunch of deputies and or generals. Uh, we have traditionally only had two. And they sit there. And now I'm going to, just I've talked to the sheriff about this, I'm going to reconfigure our front to put in a new security station quite similar to what they have over at General. It's probably significantly less expensive. And I'm, I've heard that about some of my special projects, you know, that I'll build it and tell you I did. Uh, and it's, you know, and it's already been paid. So I waited for a minute. The Sheriff's Office came over last week and he screwed up our office. So, be discussing how, someone there, obviously their staff, people are gonna have to do that. So it has to have some tactical advantage. And I'm going to do that. Uh, but honestly, our ability probably to have more incidents on a monthly, yearly basis and that will be probably everything. Uh, so there, there is a reason for three things. You know, we have two floors. And you have the people coming in the building. But then on the second floor, that's predominantly where the fight is. So if you have two deputies checking people in, you have no one upstairs, you know. I was in the middle of a fight when I walked out of my office. It helped, it, it happened in front of me. And luckily, a deputy had just came in the building to transport a prisoner. And he came up, it was brother and sister. They got in a fight, right? I mean, literally two feet in front of me. And the brother locked the sister out, but she started the fight. So he was standing kind of with the sister who was on the ground, and I was keeping the, uh, brother. Now, it wasn't anything that was, I didn't feel that I was getting armed with, but bottom line spice do start under three. And when you have two deputies just on the first floor, they've gotta run up to the second floor. And we have security, you know, we have our bailiffs, but they're usually involved in the work. So if something happens in the hallway, which is a lot of times where it does, because after they come out of court, it was happy, it was like, oh, that's me. Someone's mad all the time. So that's when they start popping off, and that's when the fight's breaking. So, I'm willing to work a little bit. And like I said, I, I like the idea of trying to get a grant for it, but I don't know that our traditional funding, that might be something that I can look into. Uh, I will have our P K, see if there's anything available out there. Uh, and like I said, I don't know, that's probably more a data question, is how urgent this thing is. I'm, I'm, I don't know that it's as urgent as the water rate increase. Uh, but, uh, you know, it, it does see on my in my fault. But, you know, I, like I said, I, if you're gonna spend this kind of money, probably need some cameras too. People just talk about buying a full camera for the whole county in that place in the past needed. And that's okay too. So, that's what I have. Um, questions, Commissioner? Any question?
When I saw you walk in, I knew it was gonna be costly, I mean, that's a lot less than, right?
Tim, like I said, the, the security, you know, I'll build it before he tell you about it after I did it, but, uh, uh, this is something. This is better. I was told about a couple of these, you know, like, why is some data, I said, why are people? I don't, it's kind of not my venue. I have more programming, you know, visible soon. So, so I that's, you know, it is, but that would be
Tim Hamer, Chief Deputy Auditor, um, to add to what, uh, Jeff said. Thirteen years, how long that's sort of been around. That's very good as far as do we enjoy the, the risk of that thing going down? And is security, it, we identified that as being a priority for us. So, that's something that we need to address. That's one. Two is that normally the owner of that building, the Commissioners Office, in this case, I believe, it would be the one that we, we make requests. So that's kind of where that's, that's coming from. That was why I got pushed back a little bit. You know, it, it doesn't come out of data, it comes out from the owner of the building. I would definitely say, if we're gonna start, you know, down the road and making security priority, this is something that we need to take a good hard look at and do it, but now. Uh, and if, if cameras should be included in that, we can start looking at upgrading the cameras too. A lot of those are cameras. Today, you can get four K cameras that are gonna pick up items, you know, you you can pick up details, you can pick up the temples on my face. So, if you wanna go that route, we can. I don't know how much it's, it, it is something that's, that's absolutely necessary.
Well, I think we need to look at that and see what the cost is. Yes.
Um, oh, right, right now, there, the, the main item is that sort of, that, that server, like I said, started out thirteen years. You, you got lucky to get to that point. Who knows how much longer that's gonna last?
Tim, is there, or do you want to kind of, is there time? Uh, or like, could we get a window of time to maybe research the great idea while we're or, or do you recommend?
I would recommend for that server forward as quickly as possible. That, that, because like, and I, I know I've said twice already, security needs to be part of it.
And I, I, I I could think the, like, my biggest concern is yours. In fact, that's, it's not like we have a server retention and then we have one for the actual court. So, it's, runs the whole thing. So, the attention and the things is, is probably, if you're gonna prioritize. But, but since it's run all of them, I still have a system.
And Commissioners too, we just talked about security being a priority. With about a quarter million dollars of the Karen Infant Fund, we're gonna do some with the Sheriff's Department, they, which is clerk of courts where that money came from. Twenty thousand dollars, I think, if that were to that, money there would be nothing and probably appropriate for something like this.
Um.
But check on the cameras also.
Well, my thought on cameras is look into that, or there's, while we're looking at getting quotes on cameras, maybe look into where it's from.
Yeah, no, like I said, I don't know where I had heard it. I, I, I think it came from maybe someone in your office. That they were looking at buying several cameras for the entire county. Or, and then as cameras would go bad or where a particular camera is horrible, that they replace them. And, and like I said, I think that if you're willing to spend this money, ultimately, you have to do it. Now, that's anything that's up to me. So. So, that's all I have. You're, you're, um, you have a meeting on here. It will become one inch.
Uh, well, it's meeting actually in noon and two, but, yeah, they can run another one. You might as well, if anyone else we can clear out here, we'll get to the, but...
Sure, thank you. Sure. That's something.
Sure, sure. Also, from the Sheriff's Office. Good. So, we have some issues we found security wise and it's going to be hard to stop. Last night, we were broken again. Then there's my, there, it's their kind of broken down. Two, one's, one's not working. Jail temperature went to sixty degrees. It's not good. And there is some, it's unsafe. Our prisoners and our, our inmates and our workers. Conditions. Suggesting to re-secure the system. Fortunately, that's not where I'd like to spend. Assessing. They're looking for extra blankets. Thanks last night. We gave them all the blankets we had, we didn't have enough to get it yet. So. I don't know what the repairs are. It's the guy. So it doesn't work. System. Can't have a jail with that, with that door still in there to go. Bill's, Bill's not here.
Uh, Commissioner, Alex, David Johnson-Bush, also I can tell you, uh, now that it's my department whatsoever, however, I do wanna state for the record what Sheriff, or Sheriff Sergeant Wilson said, we are spending overtime fixing these things as well, just know that. So, again, the Board of Commissioners needs to know all the facts. And if the facts are that we're spending overtime money to continue to fix a boiler, again, I'm not a boiler person, I, Sheriff, so, I mean, listen, I, I couldn't tell you what's wrong with it. That's not my expertise. But I can tell you that we're spending money. I'm watching the tickets come in and we need to do something. So, we're needs to make a decision of, do we need to buy a new boiler? I know that is, you know, not the decision that everybody wants to make and spend money, but we have to start, you know, looking at it for what it is. And when we're paying overtime to fix something and it's not getting fixed, we need to be questioning, is it even fixable? Why are we spending that money there? Do we need to buy a new boiler? Sheriff Wilson, that's up to you in the, in the Board of Commissioners, but I did wanna...
And we got an outside opinion outside of our main, it's that with the boilers.
You have to tell your board, Sheriff, and I'm not...
The other issue is they have the contractors in.
Correct, correct.
So, in a contract, I would make it.
And this has heavily picked up over the past, I would say, three, one to two weeks. So this is very relatively new. Again, I don't know what was going on before that, but I have, it's been to the point where, when it's reached me, again, because of safety concerns in the jail, because of temperatures in the jail, because of complaints from the employees, not just the cold right now, however, we have the opposite as well, where I had people reach out to me on Saturdays. I had a, I had a, yes, I had corrections officers who are in full blown, you have to understand, they're in full blown uniform, right? They're working, they were working in ninety-seven degrees. It was unacceptable. I got on the phone immediately and had that taken care of. That shouldn't have to get to HR on Saturday. Why are we not correcting this before? Sorry.
Well, I don't disagree with you. I, you know, if it's, if we're pounding money into something that is a, you know, it's like putting silk on a pig, really, when you think about it. This is, it must be an old system.
I was, yes.
And, and there is much more, uh, I would say, energy efficient ways to go probably, or, you know, updating. Uh, so I think we really need to look at that. Definitely. Yes. Uh, and you said blankets too, right, Sheriff? Like, we need just, uh, whatever you use your...
No, they have blankets. If we need additional blankets in case it's emergency.
Like, any idea about, like, I don't know.
There's special jail. I'm off the... We were calling one county, Johnny, or anybody else.
Yeah, that's, that's not exciting.
Yeah, so Commissioner, the Sheriff Wilson's, so it is a special type of blanket. It has to be for a security reason. Uh, one that you can't, you know, obviously rip to shreds and, and do things with. Um, so that, I, I can't help you with that either, but I do know that that is the case. There are special blue material. They are very, very, very special, specific to jail safety measures. Uh, and they have to be able to pass inspection. So, it wasn't as easy as just to, you know, emulate what it's saying. It's not as easy as just going to Walmart and buying twenty blankets, right?
To meet cooperation, ready to come, um, we got the bill. Maybe, uh, next issue. So you asked me to come up with some security items that we may need. So, we looked into the new property evidence room that, quote in the works, well, uh, mobile companies. So our, our evidence room needs to be designed, security reasons, and now watch it that piece. Second, security issues are entranceway, entranceway is unsecured. Anyone can walk in there. That patient, that one, they put in there. They're the one, it's secure. We have armed officers there in the front office that watches cameras. They'll walk in to dump. So, they, so the, uh, we're suggesting is a new entranceway to secure the lobby, to secure the entrance of the general, the non-citizen. Safety area. Also, uh, uh, which is a, uh, they, tech. Uh, that's, uh, so. And the faulty glass and engineering systems. Also, our cars. I've got a list of cars.
Were you guys able to put in for that grant that the state has right now for jail?
Yes.
Uh, was any of those an entryway included with that grant?
Uh, so. It's just have a list of cars. We have four eight control cables. Those, um, it's all this two thousand thirteen. So, two thousand, all tracks work. To, uh, twenty twenty. It was two hundred thirty-five thousand miles. Two hundred thirty-six thousand, eighty thousand, ninety thousand, that's a lot. Hundred sixty-seven thousand. Hundred eighty thousand, hundred fifty-five, two hundred plus, hundred eighty thousand, two hundred thirty-seven. Hundred fifty-eight. Two hundred twenty-four thousand. Hundred thirty-five, hundred sixteen, sixteen, two hundred thirteen, one sixty, sixty-five, one fifty. Two thousand thirteen December. That's two hundred fifty-seven thousand miles. Now, if these vehicles are used, what they do is they use the higher mileage to be for security. Obviously not using control, however. He's definitely responsible for incidents. These vehicles not only are they constantly repainted with the same models, they're alive, but it's all officers. Because who knows what's something that has this many miles. Especially for operating person. We need one. You got a quote for vehicles? Or ten from statewide. These are twenty twenty four malls ready to go, everything included, ready for. Where is it? My quote is. Ten to six hundred seventy one thousand dollars.
That's equipped.
With everything equipped, uh, we just put our radios in there. And you've recently looked at these four stores, search on the. He's possibly new being set around. We can make sure a lot of time, position, lifetime, sixteen months of vehicle.
Sheriff, do our civil deputies state the vehicles though?
Yes.
Is there a reason if they're working in ports, they take a vehicle home, all this mileage on the car? I know we got some deputies up in the county. The county files every day. They come to work to work in a court and they go home. They're not doing deputy stuff besides support security.
That's a problem for our administration. So we're trying to come more efficient with what we have. Find better officers. Uh, our goal is to have everybody. Train them. So they're not in the jail or they're not. What else is safe? That's something difficult. A lot of guys that haven't been trained properly. Be retrained. But a lot of certain issues. That's all. Super community. So already, it's already out of the office. It's a fine issue. That being said, we have field training officers, sergeants. And that means. Take some time. Also trying to hire anything. Uh, we're thirty corrections officers, sure.
You don't have vehicles, so this stuff is.
That we need to bring in. You got applications and the two now who to compare here. Team application. You go speak.
I'm sure I don't, I don't know what your feeling is. That money we got from the courts, I think we need some of that for the sheriff, like I think we need to buy his vehicles. And uh. I say, and especially if he's got a higher league deputies. We don't have the luxury of the thirty eight million dollars for being funded. So I, we're gonna have to use this money. What better way to use it than on security? Have to give him. Vehicles and records.
I I I agree with you with that, Commissioner, with all due respect. That. The intent of that money was special things that wouldn't normally be part of everyday doing business. And this is.
And we don't have.
I understand that, but that doesn't mean we take from something that wasn't intended for that. We don't have the money for coroner either. And he's working in a garage and it's gonna be summer, no air conditioning in a garage where he's got dead bodies up. And we need to do something about that. But we're gonna lose our forensic pathologists. And they're not gonna have evidence when they do a murder case or or whatever that the guy's working on. I mean, there's, there's a lot of needs we have in this county. And I know that's the easiest little lying fruit right now, but there's. We're not broke. I mean, as a county, I mean, there are ways that we do do bonds. There are ways we, we do fail, we're broke, we fix it. We're we're paying it off. There's different ways to do things. Our nine one one center, we can make the same argument. These guys can't go to work unless someone's on the radio telling them what to do when the calls come in. And right now we're on the verge, I mean. Of anarchy of people walking out of there because of the.
But and all due respect, Commissioner, that's why some of that ERP money should be looked at. In my opinion.
When I got here, there was ten million left and we split it amongst the townships.
Shouldn't. We got repairs.
And and all due respect, the sheriff's department at that time did get over three million dollars of the ERP money. Then got got nine hundred thousand dollars with the. At that time. Out of ERP money.
But he just gave you the numbers. He's got six or eight vehicles. He's got over two hundred thousand.
I agree then that the previous sheriff had. Many of them. There were more than that, nine out of nine hundred grand.
I mean, it's all hindsight. But but because we're behind eight ball in everything, nine one one, coroner, everything. You have the elevator over at the planning commission, you know, three hundred forty four thousand. You know, all this, where are we supposed to come up with all this money? You know, he needs to hire new deputies. They're gonna have new vehicles.
Okay, it would be nice to have new four deputies. Don't get me wrong. We can survive and we can get by as a county without him hiring one more person. We did survive the last four years and that same number of people. Do I want him to be fully staffed? Absolutely. Don't want him to have the best equipment? Absolutely. But we were at a maintenance level in some departments. Some departments are failing. They're not even at maintenance level yet. We need forty dispatchers. We're twenty or whatever it is, eighteen, twenty two. We need forty. Like I said, we need, there are a lot of needs we have in this county and I agree with you. I want to give him every tool he has in the box. If we have a big box of money, he'd have everything that he wanted. But there is a point too of maintenance where we have to just get by with what we get, get by with to provide the basic services.
The prime example is a butter in the sewer. That's the prime example. You just kick the can, kick the can. Now we're kicking the can. He's got eight or nine vehicles. Start going down, we're gonna be in trouble, especially when we have this money. Maybe, maybe the old clerk wanted it to be spent a special way. But we have to think what's best for the county. And what's better than.
Increasing services on the county, I don't think is what the.
I don't think he's increasing. I think he wants to maintain it.
Oh, hiring people and buying new vehicles.
Well, yeah, well, hiring, hiring the people is one thing, but he he's telling you that he needs vehicles. Okay? And he needs security over there. That's been an issue. All right, so we're gonna have to come up with the money. I mean, you and I took the tour. You know the issues.
I absolutely.
And you know what? And that money is gonna have to come from somewhere and those those things need fixed now.
And those, those things, like I said, I I brought it up last week. Let's use quarter million dollars of that money and do that which needs done right now. But that doesn't mean use all the money to fund everything he wants and the other departments get nothing.
So let's find five vehicles. That's something, that's something we maybe make a compromise and, you know, maybe. I'd like to buy those five, at least to get by. Yeah, I mean, five is better than nothing. We can make, you know, some compromises and delegate. Whatever we can, as we can to each, you know, all those departments.
And the one thing I agree, we're doing budget things this afternoon with the sheriff's department. He's kind of under our wing a little bit. If we're in the past, when they run short, we know we're taking care of the sheriff's department. When we look at budgets. We give him twenty five million and say, go to town. I'm gonna ask for it later today. We're somewhere around with the last sheriff had. When he needs money. He's the first guy that can come back to us if he has a shortfall in the end. And as we had see. More money coming in from the tax base or we see where we're financially, that's gonna be the one that's probably gonna take care of. We we can assume right away. That that's the guy we're gonna take care of first when it comes to that, after we budget everything else.
And by just saying. With operating costs alone, with what they have in payroll and employee costs as of right now, with just what they have right now.
Maintain.
Just maintain. We have to understand, we can talk about this later, that you realize that's eighteen million dollars alone. We understand. So what I'm hearing now, right, is thirty more COs, right? Nineteen, twelve more sheriff deputies, twenty. That twenty five. In no way, shape or form is going to cover your bare minimum. Employee expenses, salary costs.
Oh, correct. We already included number twelve this week. Just out of curiosity.
So you're saying we budgeted?
That should be already.
Then how did we go? Then how that I I believe that's.
Yeah, I I couldn't either. How do we go way over that number if those people weren't even getting paid? They weren't even on the payroll.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that later, but that's just something that we need to absolutely dig into.
That's a third of our budget right there of the whole county, a third, right? Just right there. I mean, we understand. You know, you know, we're. We're we're here with you. We're all this this together to figure out how to put this puzzle together. We just have to make sure. Everybody gets fed first before somebody. Gets a second. Keeping it.
Mark's looking.
Well, with 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 only so many of those twenty twenty four vehicles here, would you agree to buying five vehicles?
Well, if when we look at the budget stuff, I would agree that's needed and I would agree there are some that are. The ones that are over two hundred, absolutely. I I wouldn't want to be the guy out there on a pursuit in a vehicle that's over two hundred thousand miles. And that's putting the officer at risk too of. Front end damage and everything else, you know, that could happen when a vehicle hits that type of point. And that's where, of course, I'm sure you reallocate the vehicles for the people that need them most. You know. If a civil guy is just driving to get to court, he should be driving the one with two hundred forty four thousand miles compared to. An afternoon sergeant and maybe in a high speed pursuit today, you know, we may have to reallocate or move things around that way.
Couple other issues that we have. Deputy's processing evidence. Deputy room, reports room. And that's what we need your money. So these guys are doing that. That all. They're really bringing in all the road process. And that's. Need it up or not, I don't.
We have a brand new lunchroom downstairs that we invested a bunch of money in last year.
However, that being said. Like to include as part of our property renovation and our interior issues. To make a special. Revenge. That's processing. Just something that doesn't.
And that that goes right into the new evidence, goes right in and and that. So that's, that's a.
Another issue is. Officers that are working in the courts. Their equipment's in the car. So so make sure it's a silver. They have to lock the parking. Let the C S safe. Thankful house. The house. So that means the vehicles, so they don't have to model in the park. Grab right now, so. Issues. And so you have a cost though, Ed?
No, I don't.
He's probably looking under two grand or something the size of you.
You know, nice decent safe.
So.
Yeah.
Six or eight.
But there are, yeah, but are looking for evidence. You have about fifteen or twenty that are sitting there on the shelves right now that haven't been used in years. So. I need to look at those first.
So I I did have some costs. So off of K nine. That's offered us. Listen on there is the cost of K nine. Cost of K nine, everything included. Up to around almost twenty thousand dollars. We can get this dog free. He's gonna be here two weeks. It's about two months old. I'm getting out K nine. TJ Dog and Stealer. I think it's about thirty dollars a year. These agencies. It's offered us this dog. The only thing we have to supply is a vehicle. And K two. Also, the K nine program we have now, deputies said that they have ways to raise some money. To. Set some costs. To that. So it'll be tracking the audio.
Well, this is something too. I have a little experience in with what five dogs for a DNR through the, through the other organization I work for. And. They cost O D R anything for it. Dogs are five grand a piece. The training, they through the training course. It was state training. They do have the maintenance, which is fully funded by the public on that. They have support groups. Paid for that, you know, donors, friends of group or whatever the dog. Um, they they use it for PR in the schools, things like that. But a lot of that stuff, I would assume. Michelle and Gus. She's still there?
She's.
She was in the.
Okay, her her dog, Warren was here. She knows the the generosity of. The community. So I think that's something that could be fun a lot with the community through donations.
And uh, Mr. Dogland also expressed that there's been a new organization set.
Now, would this be another officer, K nine officer handler, or is this the utilizing the K nine handler we have now?
This is an additional dog, additional officer for K nine. We have one working dog right now. It's three years old. They usually have like expectancy work expectancy for eight to ten years.
Sheriff, Alex Johnson Bush, I know this sounds silly, but just make sure that we insure the dog. So that helps. You would work with HR to make sure that that gets whatever you got fixing shirt, your horse. I appreciate it.
So how soon is this all available? It's not good to be able to train some clean. So he's gonna be here two weeks from Florida. The process of training should be. Couple of months, I imagine.
You have to pay for the training or is it?
Everything in there that fifteen five is called the dog in training. All the maintenance training for the next three years. And all the equipment that goes with the dog. That reaches a one. And then also.
So it's obviously it's fifteen five and that's it.
It's not zero. Zero. That if you have here's an estimate of what we promised to buy that dog. And everything that comes along with the dog.
So everything below the fifteen five is moving out of the source.
Everything's, everything's zero. It's not.
So they're gonna pay for the maintenance. They're gonna pay for the gas. They're gonna pay for everything.
And these, this. Uh.
So what do you need from us? Car and a guy.
So a car and a guy. Just, just two hundred and fifty grand. That's all.
Do you have the guy that put in there? Uh, we have Winston B K nine officers. So that, so we don't need the guy. Person, the personnel, all we need is another car. So now we buy the six cars.
Or it's one of the five cars.
Okay, that's what we can work out, but I appreciate you guys.
No, that's, I like it. I like it.
People working really hard to make our. For my vision, as you are and.
Thank you, Sheriff. Let me ask your question. The K nine unit, is that on the road all the time? Or is it just on call?
He's on call and he's on the road forever. Right now.
And I was saying, maybe if we watch you five cars and you think the best one, if you put that one. The K nine. Think that would work this. So do you need? You need an answer from us then, right? At some point in time, some point in time.
Can you look and see just? The course or what it costs for a dog, for a cost is gonna know there is.
Where are you insuring though? I mean, where are you insuring the K nine now? So, yeah.
Oh, I would, yeah, I mean.
I I didn't. It's not gonna cost us a car if we buy a new car. We got to go ahead and do it.
I know that we're working for some team on dogs. There's other departments that would like to call us as well.
I guess we don't need an agenda item for us to agree to go and receive the dog and.
So county prosecutor's office, I just wanted to throw out too, because, you know, just to be clear on the vehicle purchase. Right now, the competitive bidding threshold is just over seventy five thousand dollars for counties. So any, anything we're gonna purchase in excess of that is either going to have to go through the competitive bidding. Process including vehicles. Uh, or if you have to have an exception to competitive. Uh, or it has to have an exception to competitive bidding, whether that's through the state purchasing program. Whether that's through one of the cooperative purchasing groups that we're a member of in Trumbull County, I can help work with that if there's any. I just wanted to be clear, uh, before we get into sort of a bidding issue on that.
So we accept bids, that, you know, we don't have to take them, right, just accept it, right? To see, to see what's out there.
Well, no, anything's over.
Yeah, no, no, I, no understanding, but, but if we, we say that we're gonna advertise for, say, five vehicles. Let's make sure that they're out there. But soon we have to approve that, once we find out that they're there, what I'm trying to do is trying to protect this, that we're gonna buy five vehicles. Getting before the law. Because if the twenty twenty fours are mine, that twenty twenty five, that rate increase in, okay, waiting period.
And I understand what you're saying, I, and that's been a trip with vehicles for probably the last five years at this point. But there, there is no. There is no legal exception for that, unfortunately, so. In, in other words, if you, if you have something that's gonna cost the county over seventy-five thousand, has to go out to bid. And then one of those bids would have to be awarded, so. I, I guess, in, in, unless there's an exception, we can find otherwise through state purchasing measures or something like that. That's been an issue where. The bid goes out and all of a sudden those vehicles are gone by the time, you know, the bids come in and are awarded. I, I just wanna warn you, it has been an issue, we've dealt with that with one other department in the past few years. Uh, so we, you know, we can help try to be proactive, but we, we gotta, gotta be careful to follow those competitive bidding. Well, it's, it's, the problem is that we're gonna buy six, six in total, so, so, yeah.
So I think it's important, we had an audit, I think it's very important to just be transparent. I, I completely can relate what Mister Danza was saying, only because, to your point, yes, when you're looking at it in an individual line level. They were looking at it for another department in the past as well, it was under the seventy-five thousand. But that did get us into an issue with an audit finding when you.
Like I said, I'm happy to work with you guys on it, it's, you know, there's a number of exceptions. That we can look through and see if any of them apply.
So turn, are there people here that are here for the twenty twenty six? Raise your hand if you're here for that. We're, we're running over here, and then we have our next meeting in here, so, and downstairs, the other room is kinda taken. I guess if, if you wanted to. I've got six, seven seats in my office, if you guys wanna go to my office and meet.
We were, it was our understanding, since you guys, uh, talked about this a couple of weeks ago, that we were gonna report out, tell you what. Our organization's doing for bringing Ohio two fifty, we've got some information, so. Really, it was an informational session for you guys to know where we are. Um, and what's, what to look forward to in twenty twenty six.
Yeah, that was Thursday, we scheduled for noon, so. Do that, put them before we get to it.
I think you should, um.
Sure, and I'm gonna bring, if it's okay, Megan Breen. Uh, with the Trumbull County Historical Society is gonna join me. We, uh, Beth Carmichael, Trumbull County Tourism, Megan, wanna introduce yourself?
Hi, Megan, I'm the executive director of the Trumbull County Historical Society.
Uh, and you can ask any questions, but again, we understand that you guys were asking about America two fifty and Ohio two fifty as well. And, so we wanted to tell you what we've been doing over this past year, and then what we're working on for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. And what tourism and historical societies hold for.
Is this everybody who's involved here?
So you thought, you have Graceville is here, they're the only community right now that is registered as, uh, Ohio two fifty. So Terry, if you wanna come up?
Yeah, come on in and take a seat so we can all get a little noise in here.
Oh, good, perfect, how are you doing? Yes. You're on. So, alright, so, um, we are, our organization's Trumbull County Historical Society, as well as. We've worked together for about a year, we have, um, my Nick. And Ryan, and they've been leading, um, the charge for the last year. Uh, Ryan has been pulling together meetings, I think we've had three in twenty twenty four. And they brought up, they brought together four. Six meetings in twenty twenty four, and they've been bringing together the historical, um, community, uh, organizations. And through that, we've been communicating out of friendship. Um, as of today, Graceville, Terry always on top of things. Graceville Township is officially an Ohio two fifty community. Trumbull County has been submitted, we got the, um, signed resolution waiting on us, it's trouble counting to be. A registered community, I just learned Helen, um, is registering to be a community. Also has Becca, that we know of, is done their registration and just did the resolution yesterday, so they'll be submitting.
Who, who are we dealing with, with that?
There is, um, uh, there is an actual organization called Ohio two fifty that's in Columbus.
In twenty twenty two, it was the state appointed by the county manager, was the director of government affairs. So since twenty twenty two, there's been state by. And that's when we started as part of this process, and pulling together the thirty-two groups throughout the county. And I do wanna make sure that we stress that the group, the meetings that we've been having over the last year and a half. Have been comprised of not just our organizations, but all twenty-two organizations, historical organizations in the county. Plus, most of the libraries as well, and tourism, um, so it's been a very comprehensive regional group. That has had a variety of conversations sound about different events that they wanna see in their local townships, but also things we could do as a county. And across the valley.
Two weeks ago, I got a call from the governor's office, and they wanted. Us to commit, they want the commissioners to appoint, a point person to join the governor's council on two fifty. Is that the same thing as this, or is that a separate thing that we're doing?
Completely separate, and I don't have that information to have a conversation with them. That's, I need that information, or just my name on there, or maybe in Megan, so. With the commission for two fifty, that is myself and Megan are on there together, so. The Ohio two fifty, you said something, and it just reminded me to say something. Um, so on two fifty, the two fifty commission has themes and trails. They started last year launching those, and so those go through the commission and they go through Tourism Ohio. And the first trail that was launched last year, and I have it given, given it to you in your packet, it's called Wheels Up. And so Trumbull County Tourism actually, Nick, um, submitted. Three sites to be on this particular trail, the aviation trail. And, um, they accepted Ernie Ball Museum, and they accepted the National Patrick Museum on this particular trail. That launched in the fall. The next trail that's coming up as part of two fifty is the Creativity Trail. That is launching actually in a couple of weeks, and the Medici Museum of Art is on there, and so we at Tourism are, when these trails are coming up. We're submitting, um, the, uh, sites that we know fit within each one of those themes. We're going to this year start to send out more information, um, to our partners, just in case we might have missed something. But there are parameters associated with, you can't just be a site, it can't just be like a historical marker. It has to be a location where visitors can come in, it doesn't have to be seven days a week, but it has to be open a few days a week, um. Two to three days a week. So that it's a visitor destination, so if you go to a trail, you're not really looking for a historical marker, you're looking for some sort of museum or site experience, so. That prevents us from having a lot of our sites, we have all these great historical societies with a lot of great, um. Uh, collections, but they're not necessarily open consistently. So that's one of the main things when we're looking at these different. Um, on the big page, I have given you, um, the themes for twenty twenty six. And we as Tourism Ohio and the commission are sending information out to us, we'll be sending it out to everybody as well. Trumbull Tourism is going to be, um, promoting those themes each month and encouraging communities, um, and sites. To do something that's so associated with these things. So creativity, so, um, the next trail, just so you know, is gonna be focused on Lake Erie, the Ohio River, and then with connecting. Now systems, um, they haven't really defined the name of it yet, but that's gonna launch this summer, and they have a couple of submissions yet. Uh, future trails coming in in twenty twenty five and twenty six, into Ohio's Innovation and Inventors. Ohio's Transportation Trail, and then Ohio's Leadership, um, Trail. And, um, they also have completed, and that's what this sheet is here. They're completing, and we can add if we've missed, which we may have, um, they're doing an Ohio Goes to the Movies database, it's a sixty. Four-page database right now, and they're updating that, and Trumbull County has one, ten-ish, ten fifteen locations. Including Bristolville, so we can brush up on our history and see our, our movie history on this sheet. Uh, but Bristolville, of course, champion with Chris Columbus, um, Lee Brackett, we talk about her a lot from Kinston. She's known as the, um, queen of the space opera, and she's also in the science fiction Hall of Fame. Um, so you, we've got several movie sites as well that is listed in the database, and again, that one is, um, it's, it's more. Responsive, so if we have something that we missed, we can add that in as well, just.
There's Darrow from Kinston.
He's, he wouldn't have had a.
But it would be a subject, there are. Isn't that what I'm trying to think, it was.
We can check it out.
Yeah, I'll look, I'll actually look it up. Yeah, but I'm pretty sure that, that there were, they, there was a movie made on Scopes Trial, and that would be.
There's a few movies in. Like Stare.
Right.
So we're always open to receiving more information. Um, and then the, the very last part, there are steps to becoming, um, an Ohio two fifty community, there's a website. It is relatively easy, um, it, they're, they're not doing sites, they're only doing communities, and it's really just takes a resolution, a signed resolution. And it's very easy, um, application to fill out.
When they become a. Community, I mean, designated, does that open up the. Flight gates for this, you know, these.
I wouldn't call it.
Well, not flight gates, but I mean, I mean, the community would be involved so that they would, uh. Kind of to show off their, you know, part of their history, sort of.
Right.
And one of the things that we're looking at now is there's, so there's the projects that I'm working on, right, we have three or four projects. That we are looking at pushing out, whether that's, um, within our own organizations or a contractual company, that would, something's part of those projects. There's also a lot of projects that I've heard multiple community members talk about, that they wanna do specifically, right? So, and that's, I see from our point of view, is the Trumbull County Historical Society, that is also county-wide. Uh, we're coordinating those projects that are truly county-wide, right, that they pack to multiple states. Um, and then I'm sure there's gonna be lots of other smaller projects that happen separately. So, um, those projects could be funded specifically through the, um, them being Ohio community and applying to the grants. They're very small grants, they're twenty-five plus, they, they're reasonable, but, uh, but we're hoping. Correct.
The communities under Trump.
Correct, and then we also have, um, is that, is in our next project in the next couple of months, Nick is. We've got the URL trumbeltwo fifty dot com, and so we'll be putting all of the Trumbull two fifty information on there as well. Um, so, and if a community still wants to do the two, a two fifty event, but they aren't an official community, that doesn't bother us. Um, we'll, we'll go ahead and do that as well. Um, I know, well, if you wanted to talk a little bit about the projects you guys are working on.
Yeah, so there's a few things that in solidating with the, the merger that we've been meeting with, that we feel strongly that we want to do for America. Um, both within our organization and across the county. Um, the first one is a traveling exhibit, that would be value-wise, with the Loning County and Flumia County. Um, showcasing the early history of the western tourism, um, so looking at two fifty, two hundred fifty years later, and what has survived from that approach. Um, so we're in the process of planning that traveling exhibit, trying to figure out if sites would be included. Uh, but we do know that there will be an outreach portion of that project, where our hope is that the. Out of Trumbull County would be willing to contribute artifacts for that travel. So that's one thing we're looking at, the second, which might be our favorite thing. Um, is an, an art show with all of the locals from wheelstrips, we've been working with the, uh, Trumbull County F C. Um, and as well as Warren's six schools, on an art show, asking students to look at what the next two fifty would look like. Um, and have a, a public opening, um, in some programs around that. Um, and then the third thing is the passport program, um, so working with sites throughout Trumbull County. Hopefully specifically within the themes that the state has already allocated for us within each of the months. Um, to highlight and showcase some of the really significant, um, nationally significant buildings and sites around Trumbull County. That aren't necessarily open consistently every week, but they might be open once they want something. So is there a way that we can have those buildings open, promote those, um, but based on what the state is going to be marketing. And advertising all right, so tying into some of that effort that they're doing.
It's a traveling, you mentioned the traveling, um, is that already happening, uh, on the, something, we have this? Or you, we two? Oh, you're creating.
And, and then we're also hoping on the Fourth of July and. To do some kind of large event, whether that is locally, whether that's at the fairgrounds, a lot of that is gonna be worked out. But we would like to do a very large celebration, one day celebration.
And to that, um. We have had people say, well, what about twenty twenty, July fourth, twenty twenty six? And while, um, I do have a call out to the fairgrounds to see what the fair schedule looks like, if, if that would be affect. Uh, affect that, um, there is also. The Mahoney Valley Scrappers does a big July fourth celebration every year, like, they tell their league that they want July fourth every year. So it might be more, um, productive for all of us, if we get into something that they've already got, they're already raising money. Um, sponsorships, and then expand on what they're doing that day at the baseball park, and maybe doing it in the afternoon. I don't wanna take it away from the fairgrounds, but we're, we have small capacity in terms of our staffing, et cetera, and we don't. Wouldn't be able to take on a big event that I think everybody wants to see. Um, so if the scrappers are already doing July fourth, then I think we can tag on a big, um, a big celebration, July fourth. Twenty twenty six, scrappers, parking lot, all of that, um, they're, and they're already paying for it. So I'm all about. And the liability, um, so I'm all about like, um, bringing all of our resources together.
Good, um, what, what exactly do the commissioners have to do here with this?
Um, well, that's a great question, we.
To be, to be involved, you know.
Right, we will definitely invite you to events that we've got, we are talking about needing, sorry. A little bit of funding, not millions, um, but a little bit of funding to help with, with what they're talking about as well, in terms of. Creating this traveling exhibit, um, but not a ton of money. And we have to see what this July fourth is like. What we can do, but again, the scrappers, I think, are open to having that conversation, so we can, so I definitely see. So don't, don't plan your vacations for July fourth, twenty twenty six, gentlemen. Cause you're gonna be expected at some place on the Fourth of. Because you're gonna be expected at some place on the Fourth of July, I'm just saying.
It is a Saturday.
It is a Saturday, it is a Saturday, so um.
And the people that we've talked to, uh over the last couple of years who participated in the bicentennial in nineteen seventy six. And talk about how just much of an impactful event it was for them, right? People still have the wood nickels or kind of points from that. Um so there there are things that we're working on as a group, um like that as well. What things can we do that wouldn't necessarily happen in twenty twenty six as a one-off and then, you know, you don't remember it again?
Um, I was eleven, so I'm probably my age.
Yeah.
Um but we did a time capsule with, and we had a lot of things in it. And I I grew up in Detroit township in Detroit. And we had a lot of things in it, but one of the things that was impactful to me and that I remember a lot was. Um we did drawings and uh essays, um each of us is school children. And then um that was to be opened in the bicentennial or community. And I got to be in charge of that. And it was. Really. Um some of the things got destroyed, which kind of, I I was, I had spent, um. I had not had sleep up to that day, probably, very little. And um when it took longer to, it was a thing to learn, we had to get so many to check camera and everything out. And the first bucket came out, and it took like an hour and a half. Um they pulled out the first bucket and it comes like this far down the bucket, so they have. And it just, my heart sank, and I hadn't, I had nightmares about this behind a. Oh, they are, and Burton had one opened a year or two before, and the ice had gotten. And so I was, I had had nightmares of that. And then when it came out and ours were there, and they were read, the trustee was reading the letter from nineteen seventy six, and I'm still through everything.
Uh and if we can, if the Brayfield is already a community, do you have any plans right now?
So we've had a couple of planning meetings already, we have a planning meeting, and so we've had some planning meetings. Organize the other organizations that will be involved and all the other. So that's kind of where we are right now, still in the beginning.
You got a museum to open.
Well, yeah, no, so we're s- we're sort of open, we still have some landscaping work that we need to do. Uh but we do have exhibits up, and so our building is open, yeah, and we've had a couple of this. We just had a painting, this uh this this past one we think we might. Yeah, so um we have some other events planned around our museum, Brown River Trail.
Yeah.
And other things that we are talking about here.
And you guys became, are working towards a committee, is, are there any initial plans?
Initial plans right now, just getting our feet up underneath this, hopefully we'll put your back. We're happy to have, uh, we're approached by Ernie. Aviation, we're happy to have them, and that should our team be so. Trying to see what we can system. And this is our Fourth of July parade, it's a huge one in the county. I'm sure.
It's the biggest one though.
It doesn't support the July parade, so we may be seeing how we can utilize that.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, some stuff.
Um. So Ernie Hall, actually, when they did the launch of the first trail, Nick went and Ernie Hall Museum was down in Dayton for that. An inauguration or the launch of the trail, so that was.
Let's. The exhibit, this, so that people know.
Yeah, so we're just in the very beginning phases of working this out. I've had initial conversations with Bill at MBHS and then also with the Floriana Store Society, just to make sure that everybody's on board with this. From there, we'll form a planning group that will look at themes for the exhibit. Um and then reaching out to, once we have this theme set, I've been reaching out to all of the groups within Trumbull and Mahoney County. Um so that if you have artifacts to contribute for those themes, then they can be submitted and then the exhibit can be curated. Um there's gonna be certain um guidelines in terms of what can be submitted, in terms of creating and shipping and facilities management of the spaces that the exhibit will be at. Um but all of that still needs work down, but our hope is to do that within the next four to six months.
Yeah. Four sixteen. Shakes. But something like that possibly. How is that?
It's very possible, I think part of that depends on funding and the A V technology possibilities within the traveling show. Um but it's definitely something we could consider once we get the fees filled out.
Oh, I think she was talking about how to get into the database. Uh she wants to know how she's going to into the dot base.
Good question, so I, I just had a conversation with the Ohio Goes to Movies Coordinator a couple of months ago, and it's up to the site. So Robyn's Theater would have to submit that.
For the launch?
Yeah. So. Yeah. So they, that their process, they sent letters to every um event, like venue. So Robyn's Theater got a letter, Parker Music Hall got a letter, um the Amphitheater got a letter, right? So it's up to them to create shows or events in line with Ohio Goes to Movies and then promote that. Um and I, and I can get you in touch with her if you want to talk to her directly. The coordinator for Ohio Goes to Movies.
Talk to her directly, yeah.
She might have something else to say.
Because what they're doing, so there's the database that I think Juan is asking about, but um then. What you're speaking about is in twenty twenty six, they're gonna roll a lot of those movies through different locations.
Right, but the database isn't specific movies, it's people from the area, right? So I don't know that that would qualify for what they're doing, um but I would definitely want to make sure that they know what's going on.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
This was a good intermission.
Do you want to? Yeah, I think Commissioner Malloy went to have pizza. Did he leave? Okay. Um, yes, Commissioner.
According to Commissioner Malloy, the state of Ohio is supposed to give us some money.
We haven't been able to confirm that, so.
That's what he said, so if he was here, I'd ask him.
Yes.
That's, that's the impression I was.
I've talked to the Ohio Commission about this, Todd, their executive director, and he is saying that all of the grants, you can apply for grants as a county now that you approved the resolution. But those grants are very small and very. Uh I don't anticipate seeing larger numbers of funding come down.
And I spoke independently to somebody who stands, sits on the, the floor, yeah, right.
Yeah. So, so once you submit and uh once you're accepted as a community, they will send, they send out an email and invited us to the. So once you become ready to put, they send you another page, our flag. That's true, uh the Ohio Commission.
Yeah, those are also very.
They're like.
Actually, the first grant due July thirty first. So I, I may go on for.
Okay.
I think.
And a question, any other questions?
Comments?
For comments?
We're good.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're saying good.
All right. Um. Once I shut up.
Hello.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
But I would. Why are we avoiding you?
Chrissy, we did. Yeah, it's my station, it's talking, it's on the record.
I have your attention, sweetie.
We need to quiet it down, we're still on a meeting, okay? So we're gonna continue with our agenda, this has been a long meeting, and we had a lot of conversation, but we do need to move along. Since we have an additional meeting at two o'clock. Yeah. We're gonna move forward with the agenda. Hello? Item number one, to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the workshop date of January fourteenth, regular meeting. Date of January fifteenth, to accept and approve video reports.
You just need to dispense the meds, print the bill, those ones are.
Okay, approve the bills. Uh three, to appoint newly elected Sheriff Mike Wilson to serve on nine one one program review board. Sir, R C one two eight oh six. Four, authorize board of Trumbull County Commissioners, file an application for rip property tax exemption or remission with the Trumbull County Auditor. Uh parcel number three nine dash zero one three five five oh, two three nine zero one three five five three. Authorized Rick Hernandez, President Board, execute application. Five.
What is that, this number four, what's this?
All right, commissioners, if if you, uh with your permission, I can handle just four and five uh for you here. The explanation of number four is back when the county bought the first place bank building. Um there was a, a tax exemption filed for the whole property except for a portion that we leased back to Huntington Bank at that time. To conduct banking activities, that could not be tax exempt because we're leasing it out to a non-governmental use. Um Huntington has since closed that branch, and this is a uh new filing for tax exempt status for the portion that was not exempted from taxation before. Because it is now being totally and wholly used by Trumbull County for government activities, so.
Where is that going?
That's the planning commissions, um archives, those sections and.
And it's being used, the portion, part of the unit of Trumbull County, the portion that was utilized by, it's being utilized by the archives. We realized this as we were going through doing a TIF, uh implementing the TIF or a RAP, that that this lot had things that were, or parcels. Were um not tax exempt and probably should be, and so we, but we can't uh fill out that application or anything out. Uh like, so we notified the um prosecutors office.
Thank you. Uh number five, just to move along, is uh a uh standard yearly thing, though our prosecutor's office asks to put on the agenda. This is a program that we engage in with the federal government. If there is ever any criminal prosecution that involves state and federal cooperation, where there's a forfeiture of money, property. Uh we maintain a bank account to take that in, and then it's able to be used for things for uh criminal prosecutions and things like that in the future. We have not done a program with the feds for quite a while under this. Uh but we keep the bank account open just in case, and this is a routine item that we ask you guys just to. Uh essentially authorize us to continue on in that equitable sharing agreement with the feds and keep that bank account open just in case.
Is there anything else?
Is there money in there?
Two hundred dollars. We will try not to spend it all in one place.
Any other agenda item?
Anything else on here, do you think there's anything else that we submitted?
Moving right along, agenda item six, receive and place on file monthly activities for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel. December oh four yearly report, twenty twenty four. Shell Goss was here. I don't think she enjoyed the length of the meeting. Running very long. Seven, to approve rate, wait, rate, wage rate increase for non-bargaining employees at Trumbull County. Department of Job and Family Service, Child Support Division, request four percent increase base hourly rate of. Like one of those longevity increase, ten cent, the St. Preacher being absorbed by federal state funding. Uh other county mandate, no assistance, okay, Alex, do you wanna, we, we discussed this.
Yeah, uh so Commissioners Alex, Stephen Jackson-Bush, Human Resources Department, uh Director John Gargano uh was here, however, he, you know, obviously had to go and. Not only coming from that department, I was there obviously for seven years, um but outside of that, as the Human Resources Director. Um essentially, what what's happening now is we're at a little bit of a wall color stalemate. So uh ASME four fifty eight, which is Job and Human Services, uh the caseworkers there, you know, custodians, front desk workers, they have multiple employees. Uh quite a few actually, to be exact, roughly a hundred and. Forty, uh roughly, so they're one of our larger units, actually, they're actually larger than uh Company Night Forty Eight, well, honestly. However, with that being said, um they want to, uh we had a tentative agreement, uh contract wise, uh we walked away from mediation with a tentative agreement. And their union voted it down, so we are now going to back funding. What that means is this has been going on for quite some time, the contract should have been done back August first of twenty twenty four. The non-bargaining staff only, not the bargaining staff, has absorbed the insurance increases with no raise to offset that. So what John Gargano is proposing, which I would also agree with him, uh and what he's proposing, is that you give them the four percent increase that we. The same increase that we presented to the union, okay? So this is nothing above and beyond, we have kept this extremely fair across the board countywide, uh so that way that can offset their increased health insurance. Again, J F S is a very special, I I hate to say special breed, but it is, you have to understand that they're, they're literally. Outside of your seven hundred and sixty thousand dollar hand aid a year, they are funded solely by federal and state government. So they are not asking for any general fund to cover this, I think this is the right thing to do, I do not feel it's fair to penalize any non-bargaining staff just because. You know, again, the J F S bargaining unit is locked into a contract where they aren't absorbing any of that increase rate. Okay, so again, that's not fair for the non-bargaining to have to absorb that, especially when we're gonna go into executive session tomorrow and talk about twenty four ninety three. And really finish the week as a county one, so that's where we're at right now.
Now, if this happens and then they work out their deal with the bargaining unit, there's not gonna be another me too on top of it, so you have them anymore, is there? This is like giving them the me too in advance? Is that something we should do? Giving them the, to them in advance, or should we wait until?
No, I mean, this is absolutely.
Well, Commissioner, they're paying their possible reservation rates.
What I'm telling you is.
So, so are a lot of county employees that have a contract.
Which from Malloy, that's going in tomorrow, I just told you that, so twenty four ninety three is going in tomorrow. Okay, so we, I'm telling, we're trying to get all the county done, it's literally this week, so this is just um, if you look, twenty four ninety three is on for the non-bargaining. So go to item number, um. Hold on. Item number twenty two, that's updating the salary scale for the entire county.
Except for the bargaining.
Except for the bargaining, I can't. So what you're gonna see is. So what you're gonna see is the four percent pay scale, which is in your packet for county one. Way to answer your question. I mean, I I don't want you to think.
Okay, so this is just separate, this doesn't go with that because it's state.
Because it's set in state federal plan. That's why it's so different.
If they would have just put together, I'd have understood it better.
Yeah. Well, if, again, that was not my agenda, but I I'm more than happy to present it. Um. Yes, so commissioners, again. If you kind of want me, I don't wanna be one who's skipping around, but I did give you the proposed case deals in your packet for twenty four ninety three, and. Surprise, it's the same for four percent that you're seeing here. So we are not doing anything unusual, anything different. If you don't recommend this, that's your choice, but I mean, you ready? So.
Wow. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a back payment?
Uh, it will go to August first, twenty twenty four.
It barely hit what.
Correct, yes.
Only for non. For not in a union, you saying no.
But the union.
They're gonna get this eventually.
Maybe they're going to back funding.
No, I'm. You know.
Oh, yes, yeah, yep. So we could have the option of adopting them on our, on number twenty two. I mean, you have that option too to say J F S is included in our me too. No matter which way you look at it, it's just, you're saying the same thing. It's just nice to keep federal and state funding a little bit different than general. That's just the way I I, but I'll do whatever the board pleases.
But it's in the twenty two, they're getting a ten percent longevity increase also?
Uh.
Ten cent?
No, we are proposing no longevity increase for the non-bargaining.
They're good then here.
Again, they have more funds than we had to split for our, again. Well, when you're looking at twenty four ninety three, that's affecting mostly general fund. Perfect. J F S is not. The bargaining unit, to be fully transparent, was offered that same ten percent longevity.
If you. Uh, Alex, did he, did John want you to go in the number eight?
Yes, that's okay. Okay, uh, sure. So commissioners, uh, this is to approve the personnel action for the employment total of six candidates at job and family services. Um, the employees, of course, their positions and rank and compensation are specified below. Um, and the candidates would begin employment Monday, February tenth. They are to receive full county benefits. Uh, serving nine month probationary period. And again, J F S has to have, um, not only just a B C I background check, but all of us that have found J F S also have to be F B I background checked and drug screened. So we have an additional level of clearance as well. Uh, so they have done all that, passed that successfully. And they are short, I believe the last that I was, my last update was fifteen caseworkers. So this gets us fifteen minus six. So. We're making some traction, uh, but again, as you can see with them earning twenty dollars an hour with a mandated bachelor's degree, that's why we were hoping this contract to stay through. We become bumped up a little bit, um, but. They're, they chose to leave. So that's okay, that's their choice. So these are the caseworkers they are looking to hire.
Right.
All for eligibility referrals, specialists twos, um, extremely important, again. Extremely important to lessen the workload of the caseworkers who are picking up the workload right now and having to work overtime to, which we commend them for. To keep up with cases.
Thank you.
Okay, fourteen, let me ask a question here before we get to this. An unpopular question. Uh. Commissioners, the, uh, J F S has, say, about two hundred and fifty employees.
Um, so if you're just looking at J F S section, that's about one fifty, so with non-bargaining. If you're combining them with C S E A, they are two separate entities, but they are under one director. C S E A is about forty. I would say forty one, back to give our tapes.
Good. It it was brought to our attention last year and the year before, half of the employees work from home or remote. They've started with COVID and then they kept them at home. And an issue came up, we've had some disciplines. Employees being late, employees sleeping on the job, employees, um. Medical issue, whatever, medical things, didn't have the excuse right. But then I received some phone calls of. People being disciplined are the ones that are at work, the ones that are at home, if they take a nap for an hour during the day, they're not getting disciplined or sleeping on the job if they. They're not gonna be late for work because they they can log in right from home. There's no traffic delays or anything like that. But is it a double standard that we're still allowing? I know the president just called back all federal employees, um. And in remote work. Is this something we should look at again, or is this something we should have John give us another presentation on? Because of, because of the situation there too, it made me think like, yeah, that is true. Someone's at home and they decided they're taking a nap for a half hour. There's no boss discipline or sleeping in a cubicle under the desk or. Or whatever the case, babysitting, whatever. Um, while they're doing it. And I know it's based on their workload for the people working at home, as long as they're getting their job done. They said before they're okay with that, as long as they're getting their job done. I just wanted to make sure we don't have a double standard here. Most of the complaints we get regarding that are people that. Aren't working remotely, aren't offered the opportunity, or for whatever reason have to be there, and they just feel like they're there under scrutiny, under supervisor, breathing down their neck sometimes. When the people that are in the field have none of that, as long as they do their job, the people, some of them here feel like they're doing their job at the same time, but they got a boss looking at them all day.
So commissioners, before you discuss that, I just want you to have some some facts behind it so you can have an educated discussion. Um, Alex, Stephen Johnson, Bush, Human Resources Department, getting better. Um, I do actually keep abreast of their hybrid scenario. Okay, they do copy me when, I mean, again, the Board of Commissioners approved them to work. That that's, that was a, that was a Board of Commissioners directive. Uh, you can absolutely at any time always revisit that. I would ask that you have John definitely sit at the table and explain to you how it works, but I can also tell you right here, right now, they are on a hybrid schedule, okay? So most of the jobs there allow themselves to, your E R S twos, eligibility specialist twos are your bulk of your employment at job and family services. With that being said, most of them, from what I have seen, are offered the hybrid schedule, okay? So everybody is offered that, as long as they're off, there are circumstances, they have to be off probation, they can't have disciplinary issues. I mean, there are things that, you know, they have a algorithm that they'll put in place. There are some jobs, I'm not gonna sit and tell you, there are some jobs, being custodians, the front desk workers, where you need the person in the office doing the work. Um, so, you know, I I I understand that. The operational needs are always a big thing, but John has a very healthy telework agreement in place. They can be called back at any time for any reason. Uh, I have reviewed all that. I've seen it all. I was there when it was implemented. Um, so just, just so you have facts. They are. Everybody, to my knowledge, is given, as long as their operational need allows it and their job description allows it, is given the need to do the rotating hybrid schedule. So for people to call, I I just wanna make sure you understand that before they're calling and saying, well, I wasn't given this option. There might be an operational need why and or they may be given the option. Maybe they chose not to take it, I'm not sure, okay? But. I think that's something you need to look into as a board.
Yeah. Was that resolution, was that, was that a temporary resolution? Because of COVID?
It was, they had it for COVID, and then they addressed it, and, uh. Director Gargano said, hey, it's still working, we're gonna keep, we'd like to keep them in that. Keep this program going. I don't know if you said another year, another two years indefinitely. I don't remember what the terms were that we agreed to, but we. About two years ago, I think is when it was, and and we said, yeah, it's working, but like I said. The calls that I've gotten since then have been from employees that are there saying they're not getting the same level of supervision. I know that we got friends that are taking a two hour nap and taking their kid, uh. Picking them up from school in the middle of the day from kindergarten and driving back, and nobody's, they're not punching. In, out, you know, they punch in the morning, and they log in, they log out, as long as you get their work done. Like, why, if I'm five minutes late coming back from lunch. I'm, I'm up for discipline when that person at home could go to lunch for an hour and nobody knows, and nobody's watching over their shoulder. Why are, why are the ones that are stuck there?
Even if he's got married. Yeah, does, and. That's why they have GPS tracked.
Yeah, but they have a lot. They got, they, you can see the computers logged on, but.
Put it on the screen. Whatever, but how many people we talked about?
It's like a hundred.
Of working from home.
Is it so?
And and we're working at the office?
It would be more than that, so.
Okay. Room for the.
Room to be at, I remember from before.
Yeah, and and Director Gargano has always said, just so the board commissioners, Director Gargano has always said, if you give him the work, you want it back, he'll bring it back. This is not a, you know, I just wanna make sure you have all of the facts and we're not just relying on, again. I, as H R, try not to rely on rumor mill. I would like for you to have in. Facts in front of you, not just employees calling complaining, because guess what? I'm sure the employee calling complaining. There's a reason why everybody's calling. We can't just take one.
Could be.
And run with it. You wanna make sure you're making informed decisions here. Um. But again, Director Gargano's always said, tell me and I'll bring it back. So that that is absolutely at the best of the board commissioners' day.
We just, we just want the most productivity, I guess, is that in today's day and age. Moving back post-COVID, if other, if the feds are doing it and other groups are doing it, you know. That kind of became a thing, I guess, after COVID, I'm just gonna work from home today and work remotely. And we never had that word, work remotely until twenty twenty, and now we're. We're beyond that, we're getting maximum productivity. And I guess that. The thing that got me was the calls that I got regarding the discipline thing of. I get a boss looking at me all day.
Assaults or?
I got three or four last year, and really recently I got a couple. Pointed ones that were people that felt like it's not fair to them, when other people are at home taking a nap or picking to get up from school and. Stuff like that.
Well, here's my question. How many county employees other than? Yep. Are working from home?
Uh, under the Board of Commissioners?
None that I know of.
So basically, the county policy is you come work.
Oh. I'm not saying we. Do that, but I think it's time to ask John again, how is it working? Let's do an update.
I'm asking what the county's policy is.
That's all. Yeah, so the, well, technically, Commissioner, uh. Bernard, excuse me, say Alex Stephen Johnson, Bush, Human Resources Department. Technically, the county policy is the board has a standing resolution that they allow work from home. That is, that is what the board has.
Current code.
Yeah. No, no.
No?
No, this is post-COVID, uh, the, hey, this is working. There are, no. There are other arguments that are good. Yeah, the other arguments are good. It's easier to find parking for the people that are there. There's less people getting sick because they're not bringing.
We're just not utilizing.
Yeah, they're not bringing germs from home and infecting everybody in their workplace. Space, less resources used at home as far as people.
What can?
You have a meeting.
Okay, come on, okay. Yeah, so, um, I mean, technically, I guess, to your point, the board has a current standing resolution. You would have to change that as a word, obviously. Um, or rescind it.
Well, here's the old standard question. What's the other counties like here around us?
Sure, so John, and John will give you that. So there.
I mean, you know, what's Mahoney's?
Yeah, sure.
Has to do with.
And they allow work from home, and he'll show you that. So especially within the O D J F S as well, because it is a state entity as well. O D J F S has given them multiple, multiple, multiple forms of I T, not that we have here in the county. They have state.
Well, we need to look now too, because the state's doing that, but like you said, the president just executed order all federal employees, no one works remotely anymore. Will the state follow suit here in Ohio? If the state follows suit. Then we may.
That might be something, yeah.
With that too.
That's what I was just.
Instead of us just jumping and following the feds, maybe we should follow the state. It's just, I'm bringing it up there because it's. An issue, there were calls that. There were, there was a valid. Concern that I had as far as discipline being. So.
Uh.
Delved out fairly.
Yeah, I would definitely, again, suggest that you probably adhere. I don't care, it's the Board of Commissioners, you do what you want, but it's more state derivative, I will tell you that, especially if you're dealing with O D J F S, which is Ohio Department of Job and Family Services. That's at a state. The last thing is, like I was trying to say, they have state issued laptops, they have state issued programs, they have down to a keystroke how many Ohio benefits cases they touched in a day. There are multiple reports we can run and have run in the past to justify how much work they are and or are doing. Um, so there are plenty, we have a, what's called a C M S hotline, we have a two thousand line, we have multiple, uh, yeah, just like. Um. So to to kind of, I I just wanna also defend your employees a little bit because they are working and they are working very hard. I mean, they are processing cases. Daily. This county is not suffering in cases not being processed when it comes to benefits. You would know if you, if there was, you would know, they would be screaming and knocking at the front door, okay? So just make sure, I, all I'm saying is just make sure you have all the facts, and you guys make it, whatever decision you prefer.
They just may not be doing it at eight thirty, and they may be doing it at night.
Well, we would know, again, by their. Activity logs. So keep, just as I'm saying, keep that, that's not something that we have here, which is a little bit different than those tonight, not that I know of. It's just a different way of thinking because they have different technology, truth. They have teams, they have to check in with, we have teams too, but they have to do check in meetings with their supervisors on teams. If their little icon's not green, oh yes, can people put an apple on the back on their favorite screen? Yeah. Right, we're not, you know what I mean? But there are ways. I know.
Like you said, if they weren't doing the work.
We know. We would know.
And those, some of those have been brought back. John said, but they're not hitting their.
And they will bring them.
Productivity.
That's in the calendar review.
But then again, they bring it back in, then you, then they're watching over them, that that person getting watched over a lot more than anyone else.
But if they're being brought back for subpar work performance, commissioner, that's what you're expecting, don't you? We want our. Do we not want our employees to be working? I mean, that's what we want, right?
Thank you, Alex.
Sure. Again, talk with John, sorry.
Sure. Fourteen, authorize Ohio Water Development Project Authorized Representative, Delegate Gary Newbrow. From County San Attorney General. Execute payment instruction for all twenty twenty five projects which receive funding from O W D A. Fifteen, to adopt the resolution to authorize, against me, President. Of the Trump County Commission to execute any old documents necessary to accept and approve settlement agreement, the target. Uh, for the opioid litigation. Sixteen. Authorize.
Is that, is that what you want? Is the buzzing?
I don't know.
To get a proceeding?
Oh. I don't know. Commissioner? Do you know what the agreement is?
Uh, Bill Danzo, Prosecutor's Office, I actually was not aware of this. I I mean, generally, we know by looking at the, uh. Opioid stuff, so I don't know. Did you get this thing from the opioid attorney on this? Is that where it came from?
Yes, I thought.
Yeah, he wants an executive session for tomorrow to give us what they.
I knew that he was gonna be looking for an executive session tomorrow, but I didn't, okay. Yeah, I just, so I I wasn't aware. I guess, and then if that's the case, that, you know, these, any specific questions about this would probably have to go through. Him, because, uh, you know, I'm not sure, but I will say traditionally, as far as signatures go. If you don't want three signature lines and and having three signatures on it, it generally has that president of the board that needs to be created. Yeah.
If, if, Mark, the, two things. First of all, for the benefit of the commissioners. Previous, uh, to January second. Mr. Musaki, my office, who was originally in the commissioner's office, handled all the communications with the opioid attorney. Prior to his leaving, I had to. Give everything to, uh, Mr. Danzo because I felt like it really didn't belong in my office to begin with, but it's what I inherited. Um, and so that's kind of where that went. But if they're doing an executive session on this, shouldn't that be prior to the?
Getting charged with. Yeah, that's a.
I was gonna. Mention that I. We're, we're discussing something that we haven't.
Right.
I don't.
I kind of feel like the, if it's gonna present it, then it should be after that. These two should be after the executive sessions at each other.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
So do you wanna skip fifteen?
Want to, want me to pull this off until we have an executive session?
Well, I would maybe put them, is it? Not on here?
No.
It's not.
There were two, Commissioner, there were two attorneys handled on this, like, one of them is not available for more. From what I understand.
I guess the only question then would be, some of these, I think, are time sensitive. This one's time sensitive.
Right.
Um, and if so. If it has to be approved before, I just, for the, especially the new commissioners sake, I hate to have them approving stuff if they haven't talked to the attorney handling it, but sometimes I, if that's the best course, you know. I I guess they'd have to take that advice from, you know, if our lawyer's telling us that that needs to be done.
And I guess.
Hold of the attorney?
Yeah, I think. I can't.
Let him. Oh, wait, we're having, we're making the same executive session.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's.
It's not on.
We're missing. Right.
Oh.
That should be, there's going to be an executive session.
Well, I.
Sorry.
We can't really strike at the potential of this. Out on the money, from what I can.
But I guess that would be the question is, even if maybe both attorneys aren't available, one of our attorney, you know, is. We've got, I think there were what, four or five different firms appointed to this opioid case. I don't know. I haven't heard from anyone since Mr. Musaki, so I don't know if. You know, I know Frank Galucci was our point of contact for the most part. But I I don't know if anybody would be available for just a brief executive session to at least to let the commissioners know.
I mean, this this here work. What these resolutions are just authorizing somebody to deal with the attorney, someone out of the power of.
It's a sign, it has to be, I think it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a settlement.
And originally, it was Mr. Pinto Mesa, I think, when he set up two a couple of years ago because of.
I think you're right.
That's why I left president of the board, but.
What if we did, we just changed it where it says hereby accept and approve. Or deny the terms of settlement agreement. So we'd leave it, at least we have the designated, which could be Rick. And then when we do come to that point. We've authorized them to be able to. Do that after we make a decision.
Okay, well, this was his language that he came up with. This is what was used before.
So then we need.
Really, I think he he needs to, we need to get one of our opioid lawyers to talk to you guys ultimately. To make sure it's a settlement agreement that you're accepting, that you're comfortable. Uh, I I don't mind reaching out to to the attorney on this, I have no problem with that, but ultimately, I think. He needs to hear probably from you guys and, or you know, from your opinion on this. Now, I guess if he says. That he's comfortable with me passing the information along to you, I I could do that perhaps, you know, we can. Have an executive session if I get the information first. I just don't know. Again, I haven't really heard from them lately on this to know what exact status of all of it is.
Do you want me to move these to the end, like? The rest of the executive sessions at the end, or I mean, I'd have to see when it's available, if it is even available tomorrow.
Yeah, I I I would say, I I agree, I don't know that the commissioners will, are gonna wanna. Approve and sign a settlement agreement without at least knowing what their terms are that they're agreeing to. So I think maybe, in my opinion, I would say maybe move them to the end or toward the end of the agenda.
Okay.
With our hope that we can get an executive settlement.
Executive session first, then to the end, end of the uh.
Somebody reached out to us last week, I don't remember, it was an email. Or a phone message, it was one of the attorneys that wanted to talk about this. Anybody remember where that came from? And that's what started all this.
That's I guess what I'm saying, the language came from somewhere, I'm not sure. If it's time sensitive, yeah, I don't want plus problem.
Should I just skip sixteen and put it somewhere? Do we want to read it? Read sixty. Wait, that doesn't have any, oh yeah, what do you?
I think it goes along with.
Part of it sounds like. In Italian term, Napoli. Napoli Target Settlement. That's how you say it.
Shayna Sacks.
Is that?
Shayna Sacks.
Yes.
One of the, Galucci is like the one that, I'm sorry. Galucci is the one that the Saki dealt directly with. Shayna Sacks was above that and was feeling, was the attorney for all of the groups, I believe.
She's the one that sent the email, it was an email correspondence to us last week?
There's a couple different threads.
Now, right, so. But maybe Galucci could. Explain what it is to you.
When I get back to my office, I will try to give him a call today. Uh, and just.
Or he may have been, when he's done in the past with Saki, was he would do like a summary sometimes.
A written summary. And then any discussion can happen in the meeting.
Yeah. Um, but but I would, yeah, touch.
I will.
I thought that the Saki had made a really clear case.
That was for signing that share of things. Gets a rush at all.
Right, but it sounds like these are new settlements that need to be. Sort of just about the signatures, I thought, agreed to itself.
Okay, so sixteen, this one, fifteen. Should actually keep subdivision participation in these form documents we have from the government and. While they participate in the. Happily. Target settlement agreement. Seventeen. Is this what we were doing last week?
These are two uh, two additional.
Just by the Department of Labor Control, appearing not requesting. African's listed. Dollar General, Farmington Township, and Dollar General, Warren Township. Eighteen, approved Commissioners' Office Reorganization and Memorandum of Understanding, follows. Okay, um, you wanna? You wanna handle this? Alex?
Sure. All right, thanks, Commissioner. Um, we discussed this. Uh, last week, however, well, this has been discussed for some time, even the previous work. Uh, but we did feel that it was best to present it to you. So it's just great. Alex, you can just push Human Resources, current in case I didn't say that. Um, so essentially, just to bring everybody up to speed, uh. We have been doing more with less, and that is kind of how we continue to see this going. Um, we were able to, if we are able to get this approved, we are able to absolve a position, which is the scheduler. I met with the union yesterday, they are absolutely okay. With uh, bulking the payroll receptionist and scheduler into one with one pay rate, one pay range step increase. Uh, that then raises up those monies as well as not filling an additional general clerk. Uh, we filled Amy, we backfilled one with that, she interviewed for that, that she's been there, she's she's learning, she's. You know, making her way, she's moving in that position, she'll be great. Uh, Chrissy Stein is our general book two. Um, and then we have a vacant assistant clerk that we don't get, we don't feel we would like to uh. Fill at this moment, um, because we're reevaluating and assessing the work uh, in that department. With that being said. Uh, Shara was, before she was uh. What she's doing right now with ARPA, with budget stuff, uh, she actually was an accounts payable. At a pay range eight in the union. She got elevated due to other job tasks. And those job tasks, although ARPA is still very much here, it is eventually going to be going away. Uh, so we felt that it was important to el- keep her at that elevated status and essentially. Create a purchasing administrator, which the county has had in the past. Uh, we've had grant administrators, we've had purchasing administrators, uh, we need somebody who's going to be able to go out and leverage bulk costs. Um, you know, sometimes people are buying one printer, two printers, three printers on their own, sometimes people are, you know, uh, cotton machines. They're carrying those on their own, um, and we feel strongly as the Board of Commissioners, at least. From what I'm told, that there's costs that can be leveraged. If we're going out to bid uh, with larger numbers, we know that we can cut costs there. Uh, we feel like she would be a strong asset in making sure all utility, you know, billing is done correctly, all of the stuff that she's been doing. But at a higher level, more administrative level and overseen. With that being said, we would give the union back their accounts payable position, which was Shara before, at the pay range eight. That's part of the deal, we have to give that back. Um, which is not a problem, we're not trying to eliminate any jobs, we're just, you know, trying to. Do more with us. So Shara.
No, she'd be in this different office.
Yeah, so Shara would move, um, like physical office location?
The, I mean. I thought. That she would have more, less interference, I guess, I don't.
Yes, so she's still reporting to the Board of Commissioners, but yes, I'm sure you're correct. So she will, um, assume to insert some old space here in your hollow. So.
She'll report directly to us.
Yes.
Be your own. Department head, administrator, where.
Administrator.
Administrator.
Yeah, administrator, you got it, and it's uh, on. In the packet here, sorry, this is how I kind of best keep it straight. So no change to Lisa, really no change to her staff, it's just that we're again properly kind of right sizing the jobs and what they should be doing. Um, all, with all being said, this will. Approximately sixty seven thousand dollars was my number, but I put fifty thousand because truly the numbers have been flow. But yes, I I, and I can quantify that here, I gave that to you, um, last year, twenty twenty four, um. Your projected actuals were one point five five for the office staff, which includes, again, all three of you commissioners. Uh, Dimitri Leogus at the Workforce Development Board, Kathy Seagrave says our purchasing for the maintenance department. Um, and all of your county employees, uh, you know, everyday support staff, which are phenomenal, and Mike Salmon, your transit administrator. So all of that last year was at about roughly one point five five one. With these changes, um, we would be down to one point four eight, so roughly sixty seven thousand, I said fifty though, just. Or did it wrong way in the trivia, which. And sorry.
Is that, is that all kind of like for the accounts payable clerk?
Yeah.
So even if we hired that person.
I already.
We're still saying fifty.
You got it, so you can see here that I costed the vacant. Yep.
And that person will work on.
Sure.
Yeah, she can.
Succession planning, yes, something that we uh, are trying to, Commissioner Malloy loves this.
Given up a reunion.
She is, yeah, she is, uh, and then we do truly, I have to attribute this to Commissioner Malloy, um. We, we, something that him and I kind of have always seen, just because we came on around a certain time is. There was a lack of succession planning, you know, if we lose one person, so really right now you have Shara and Shara only, right? If we lost that person, uh, we saw that happen with HR a little bit too, right? You didn't have an HR real. Uh, you didn't have a rapper cousins for two years, you know, stuff like that can't, can't, can't happen, um. Shouldn't happen, we should have somebody ready to go, somebody training, some succession planning, some kind of plan, a strategic plan. So this is our strategic plan for your commissioners. And Lisa, if she has anything to add, I would. Just refer to her.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, so we got some executive sessions, nineteen, executive session, one, two, one, two, two. G four, preparing for, reviewing negotiations, collective bargaining. Strategy for asking two, four, nine, three. And we reconvene under one, two, one, two, two, G four. Uh, twenty one. Accept or reject, January thirteen, twenty twenty five, junior ratified. Sixty nine dash twenty one, collective bargaining unit. Alex. What is this?
Uh, so Commissioners, we're gonna go into executive session first to, it's kind of the chicken with the egg or the egg approaching conversation, but. I would hope that we go into executive session and come out and, uh, if we, if you approve the proposed twenty four ninety three contract. The next step, if you rejected, that's your choice, but if you approve it, then what number twenty one is, is. Emulating what we have done in the years past and extending that as the me too for all the non-bargaining staff and all of these entities. Um, that we've extended it for in the past. This is a big deal, that includes, um. Are we ready? The clerk of courts, the commissioners, including building inspection, human resources, maintenance and vehicle maintenance, coroner's office, common police work. County Court Eastern District, County Court Central District, data processing department, dog kennel, domestic relations, juvenile courts, office of public affairs, which is no longer. Probate Court, Planning Commission, Sanitarious Engineer Office, Senior Levy Administration, Treasurer's Office, Veteran Services. Prosecutor's Office, Reporter's Office, Metro Parks, Transit Administration and nine one one center. So what this does is if we accept the, again. Salary schedule for twenty four ninety three, this adopts it, I have to do that annually, as you can see, it would be August twenty fourth. August twenty five, August twenty six. Those pay schedules were given to you as the Board of Commissioners in advance, so you could review them, but. It is the fourth or two that we're proposing for. Those county lines.
Those are retro.
This will go back to August first of twenty twenty.
August.
Because the work has already been done.
Thank you for your.
Work. No, not a problem. And also Commissioners, because I know this is gonna come up this afternoon, again, kudos to any department specifically, just because you're sitting next to me. The the prosecutors and people have the wherewithal to work with HR ahead of time and say, what should we cost for twenty twenty five? So what you should see in most of these budgets was that department heads, prosecutor's offices, uh, entities reached out. And knew that we were in a collective bargaining agreement status, and they should, if they did work with HR, have already cost for that four percent increase that we're proposing.
Okay. Uh, twenty three, another executive session, one, two, one, two, two, G one, consider employment compensation of employee. And then we uh, reconvene from the same, or see, one, two, one.
Do we know what departments these employees are from?
Yeah, sure, sure, um, they are truly to uh, consider the employment uh, for building maintenance for two prospective employees. Okay.
Are these?
Yes, so there's gonna be one uh, gentleman that we're gonna be speaking with, they will both be here, uh, and then we'll come out and then we'll speak with the other gentleman.
Twenty five, the same, Alex?
Yes, well.
Where's this from?
So we'll enter and exit for, like I said, one gentleman for to speak with about the building.
Park?
Yes. It's just we have to. I wish we didn't have to, that's, that's the legal, um, that's the red tape of of government, so.
Had a lot of.
We got, I know, however, it is extremely important because this, and I hate to say that, everybody's important, but we have to. Building department's staff, the building maintenance. But that, that, that has to.
Twenty five, enter executive session pursuant to one, two, one, two, two, G one. Uh, consider employment of public employee, then we come out, reconvene. Under one, two, 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 one, two, two, G one. Twenty seven, accept resignation letter of Ms. Karen Zare, member of the Trump County Senior Services Advisory Council. Effective July twenty nine, oh four. Oh. Sad, right? Danny?
Don't just, two people from the senior levy board are. Not one people do. Sign for.
Effective July?
Yeah, yes, they were, they were. Submitted last year, somehow they weren't on. So Diane and I thought we better put those on.
And then another, uh, Mr. Tony, around July thirty twenty four, resignation we had to accept. Um, twenty nine, reappoint Sandra Scott, member of Trump County Senior Services Advisory Council. For three year term commencing January one twenty five, and seven thirty one twenty seven. Who put that on? I didn't. Who is it?
She, at the request of. Senator Jacob, I put these on. Her reorg, I believe, is tomorrow afternoon, she needs to have forum, and I think she needs a forum of four.
Yeah, I mean, she she doesn't pick who.
I understand, that's why I love blanks.
Yeah, I don't know, I I I don't know who that is.
Yeah. That's, we can't, those gotta be removed.
They're straight there.
Her remains at ten AM anyway, so this this board member's not gonna be there by the time we vote on this.
I can do whatever you like. Want me to hold these, like?
Do, do, have either of you interviewed either of those people or talked to either of those people yet? I've not, I did talk to a couple of the other new ones that we had. And I've got a couple of those that I did. Interview and see for myself, but uh. They're, they're repeat ones, I do not.
Would you like me to hold from twenty nine down to thirty three?
Yeah, I don't.
And I can just hold them for an upcoming meeting? Let me know who to call in. Who to call in for the blanks there, since by who you're appointing.
There's one I'm not seeing in our packet here that submitted a big packet to us. She was the lady that works at the mall with silver sneakers, she came and testified. Um, at a meeting we had prior, who was absolutely fantastic, and I, I actually. Remember who I'm talking about?
I got the email, did you get it?
Well, not the email one, not the email one, that's another one. This was a, this was a lady that, when we were looking at uh, one of the other programs we had.
Uh, Commissioner, Alex, you just, I just remembered because she was so energetic in her presentation. Uh, she was a, a, a very nice lady who, it was when the senior levy was giving that additional appropriations and of monies. Um, she was doing kind of a, I don't wanna call it a pitch, but, right, you know, talking of.
For the levy.
Educating, yes, educating the Board of Commissioners on her specific program and how that money.
She did submit an application, I had one in my office somewhere, it was a nice package.
Was it you were in that time when it was advertised?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, because I remember that, um, I I don't know, I I think I I know her, but.
I know I have her application in my office somewhere, and that that's one absolutely, I wanted her, and then we also have, uh. The one that I sent the, I sent an email forwarded her application around. Forwarded her application around. She's the director of the uh. Senior. In Johnson, she runs the senior center in Johnson. Johnson Committee, sir. Bert, do you have that, the email that forwarded the? To all commissioners?
When was it?
The last two days.
Was it before that, like your dagger, or after? Sent me.
She sent me one or two emails, so, so it's gotta be.
Oh, here, oh, yes, thank you.
What's the name, right?
We're not gonna do it tomorrow.
Wait, this is the wrong one.
I'm gonna, um, if it's okay, commissioners, leave the resignation letters on, I think those need to be on. They should have probably been on last fall. But, you know, that's. Yes.
Do they need?
Tomorrow.
No, I'm at normally, once a month.
Yeah, once a month and whenever Thursday that is. Uh, that's why she couldn't be here for. To meet with us tomorrow.
Twenty forty four, that's the last minute item that John and the family has made a place on. To a start date, basically, for employee. That is sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yes, that's what they.
I'm sorry, it's okay.
I was looking for it, I didn't know if it's kind of got lost. But I guess. Well, I mean, these are all the board members right here, thirty three, thirty. Actually, twenty one, thirty three.
We did, uh, if we're on number thirty four, John gave me an explanation. Uh, do you want me to explain it? Uh, board of commissioners, yes, no problem, I'm so sorry. Uh, number thirty four, so yes, uh, Mr. Larry Antet was already promoted, however. He was replacing, he is replacing the uh current maintenance supervisor there who was retiring. He decided to retire early, so alls we're asking, alls John Grino is asking you to do is move up his effective date from February first to January ninth. That's fine. But it has to be correct in the personal actions, so he, he wanted to bring it through the board.
So all new. Sorry, uh, the opioid, the two opioid items to the end, and I'll just wait to hear from the.
I'm gonna try to call. Actually, I need you as soon as I can. Downstairs, and then I'll let you know when I find.
Okay. And then we'll just go from there, uh, all new to board members, I'll just take them off and hold them, I'll hold, hold those items.
This one here, here's one, Lynn Welch from Hubbard.
Yes, yeah.
That's the one. I would like, I'd like to put hers in one of the senior levy people, she was fantastic when she gave the presentation.
And she submitted an application.
She submitted, that's one of the ones in here, yeah, it's in the packet.
Okay.
Um, but that's one that I'd like to put forward that. And then also we have Bart Vingle. Who was the supervisor now the clerk of courts, just retired from the county with forty years of service or whatever it is, thirty, some years of service. Clearly she knows the county, she was supervisor of the title department of the courts. Uh, if she wants to still stay active in county something. I think that she's on the right for that privilege or whatever, she wants to stay active with the county in some way.
Do you want this to be the three year terms that are open?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not making a decision, I'm just throwing my opinion out there, if any of the commissioners wanna. Agree with it, that's fine, if they want to interview him first or talk to him, I agree with that too.
Okay, since she needs. Okay. I, I respect your. Opinion. Why don't we just put those two on, okay? I mean, I mean, you, you've talked to him, you've kind of interviewed him. Why don't we just put those two on for tomorrow? Now then, you'll get for two new board members. For.
What's the third one that I sent to both of you?
Well, we have five of them.
Right, there's five, but there's, there's one that I emailed, but one that's ahead of the job.
What I'm saying is they could put those two on.
If they could be there that quick.
Well, at least, at least we appoint them.
You're saying, well, I vote on them right now, so that they're available for tomorrow?
Yeah, let's help, we'll put those on, so.
On tomorrow, yeah, but the meeting.
The meeting, the meeting's a tap.
We do that?
Not till we vote on it. I, I think we could vote now.
Okay, so what are, what are the names, you want them for the two, or three or four?
Technically, you know, technically you guys do treat this as a, as a regular meeting of the board. Now, traditionally, you have never, the board has never voted at. I think the safer bet would be to wait till tomorrow, frankly, uh, and I think if the senior levy advisory council. Needs to reschedule their meetings, they certainly could, I don't think that would be an issue.
I think. I were, it's fourth Thursday of the month, I just said fifteen at eleven. I think probably when she was. First of all, she actually wanted it before this week, but. Uh, I think she was not thinking about the holiday and that the meeting would. It was gonna be voted on today.
Back to my, why don't we put those two on for tomorrow?
Do that.
You all ready?
If you, if you agree with me.
Uh, yeah, I trust you on that.
And, and then the third one I'd like to put on is the. The one from Ted Johnson, senior center.
Okay, that would be for the two year term?
Well, we have.
There's two, three year terms and a two year term.
And then the two renewals.
Renewals, you want to hold on?
Renewals, I think, I, I don't think, I, I don't know the renewals event, if you guys don't know either, I need to just. Rubber stamp something with, if none of us talked to any of them.
Yeah, I haven't talked to anybody, maybe we could find somebody.
Who, who are the two names, Danny?
Barbara Vangle. Yes.
And Lynn Welch.
Lynn Welch.
Can't find him.
I just sent, I just sent it like, forwarded her resume she sent in. And then I had saved for a while. Forwarded her on everyone to make sure that everybody had it, because it came in before you guys were here.
Did you, did you? Took the commissioners?
Yeah, commissioner's email, let me look at the send. Yeah, she's. She, she would be there for tomorrow, she was ready to go.
Here's, here's an employee here. Uh, this is.
It's one forty seven.
Get the name in my head, but I don't wanna say it if it's not the right one, then I'm thinking.
Cement pizza.
Cement.
They're safe in the box. Same in the boxes.
Oh, it's a good, good broad name.
Yeah, we just bought. Commissioner, good thing I didn't buy five.
Twenty five.
Yeah, that's true.
Not on a diet, it's the way I eat, diet. One fasting right now. But I don't, I don't, I just eat carbs. I don't eat a lot, I, I.
I shouldn't either.
I eat first.
You can have her.
I eat.
So get carbs up with me.
No, not for me, some of us, we can't.
Yeah, she.
Nope. I shouldn't, nope.
You're included on.
You're okay, dude.
He should, yes, I would, I would.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's perfect, and I just have the two. Things here, so I don't know if you will, because I just drawn this up, I don't know if you. Were wondering if you want me to just like bring them back tomorrow, or whatever it needs to be for you.
Um, this one, yeah, this one brings forward is, is for our, and that's for.
Yes, yes. Okay, so you want me to just hold on to them now or give them to you, so I don't want to give you more paper with them.
That's where you.
No, that's no problem, yeah.
Yeah, the only, I got two.
So that's kind of what I figured, it's easier maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I thought you were.
Okay. Um, did you mention that? Yeah.
Okay, the third one. Diana Shimko, S H I M K O.
That's for the two year.
Yeah, she's uh worked at the Johnson Senior Center as nutrition manager, she ran the center as director until. Uh, October of this year.
You saw last time.
S H I M K O.
Oh, before we adjourn the meeting, I'm sorry.
Take, take a quick two minutes, we'll get to bathroom first.
Yeah, I can.
Well, unless they tell me I can.
That's what I was gonna offer, I can't. If they don't give me, I can't, I can go down there, so.
Without us to stay.
He wants to be.
I don't mind either way.
I, I thought it was, it was discussion between you. Regarding the.
Right.
And that's kind of what I have on the basis.
And it's just.
Right. Because you have to get.
Well, you know, that's what I'm saying, if they want me here, I'll stay, but I'll just, I'll, I'll call him, if they don't, I'll go work.
I'll go too, if you don't want me, I'll go too, be honest with you.
I mean, I can.
Yeah, fix, yeah.
I don't get offended too easily. That you have that development, then me too. We have to. Yes, you have to, to work here, so.
Sorry, Bobby, I don't want no money.
Stay here the whole time.
I, I didn't know.
All the turnover or something.
To me, this is very important. Um, I tried this back in.
Like, what is your name or where you're from?
James Subbieto. Adrian. Uh, I tried this back in twenty two. Actually, back in twenty twenty, a vacay part of Jesse Lane. Oh, I remember that whole ordeal. They had it all, it was all. Gun hole, one hundred percent, all the paperwork right here and all this stuff, county. People passed it, all this stuff, right, and then the great lady. That you were here, came in the last five minutes before doing our case, and said, we vacay. Wasn't here the whole meeting, didn't hear none of us talk about nothing or nothing, just. Not doing.
Probably my signature. Trustee, I was trustee, did you go to Hubbard Township? What was it, Brookfield?
This was, this is in Brookfield.
What, what property is it?
It's uh, the old scene part of that big grounds.
Oh, different, okay.
But uh. But we're having problems with this. Getting it closed down, just wanna vacay part of the road. I own the park property. I own the last two houses. Mike, a friend owns the little property over here, everybody that's on the street right here, it's all gun hole board. Like I said, we went through all this. I've been lied to, courtesy from. Brookfield. And they have no say so. Uh, vacating of the road, it's a lie and half. Then they're sitting there saying, they came up here and told Mr. Fuda and. The other two, that everybody uses that road, that there's equipment, can't turn around and all this stuff. They haven't touched that road, it's over. Only something here. And done nothing. I have pictures here. Of this road.
Is that a county road or a?
No, it's a paper street. It's a paper street.
Meaning?
Meaning it's never been developed, it means that there's no pipeline, no gas line, no water on.
Is anybody plowing?
Nope, they just started plowing this, this year.
Who's plowing?
Brookfield Township has just started this year, why? Because we've been pushing for this. And Tim Suddles and Jamie, whatever his name is from the broke department, has been fighting us. They went and tore up our property. Ripped down our trees. Put down some crappy asphalt crap, now it looks like total hell. They go into my property with the property over here, they went right around. They didn't tear it, it was a. Took out paper roads. You're more welcome to come down to seventy six thirty eight Francis.
Does the road lead to anything, does it lead to any, any other property, hunting property or someone else's property?
It's all my property.
It's all you.
All me. Right here is the map. That's Francis Street. I own this, 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 and all this property right here. That's Jesse Lane. For y'all, from right here. To the end, is what we want to vacay. Because I'm tired of chasing people out of there, that are doing drugs, dropping stuff off, dropping cats off, dropping the garbage off. We've asked for Brookfield, the old chief of police. Didn't want to give them, didn't want to give them. These ones here, I get told I'm tired of hearing, getting calls being down here by the police officer. I looked right at them, I said, you're in the wrong field. Don't man. If I call you five hundred times, you're coming here five hundred times. So, as I was trying to show you. This is the, there's a house there, which is, their address is Beland, besides. It's nothing to do with Jesse Lane. But they use Jesse Lane to get into the driveway. We don't have a problem with that. I'm not trying to block anybody. They can come in or out of the back way, they don't have to come up this way. You can see in this picture where the grass was all grown down through there. Look real pretty.
That's what they consider the road.
This would be considered a paper road. Because it used to look like this. Stuff like this, this is some ugly guy mowing it, it was me. Back in the day when I got it, two thousand eighteen. Nobody is ever took care of it, Jamie and Tim Suddles would tell you that they. Worked, they, they take care and they maintain this road, that they've said, that they've simply been trying to do this, which is a lie. It is one hundred percent lie, they have never done nothing. I've mowed the yard when, like I said, when I got the property. It was all like this, all high grass, even that road part was all high grass. Tim Suddles.
Is he related to?
I don't know, he's trustee, he's the trustee with it.
Yes.
On St. Dan's.
Dan's. This is what it looks like now. This is me and my wife, every day. Out there mowing for about five hours. That's not including all the weeding and stuff. What's nice about it is, as you see, like I said, it's a park. Old park, St. Bernadette, we get people coming in there that grew up there. They used to do polka dances there, they did uh, barnacles there, they did all this, all that. We get people coming over that are in their eighties, ninety, and we go look at this trail over here, I put my. We get people coming over that are in their eighties, nineties, and we go look at this trail over here, I put my signature, go for it. We want that.
You own it.
We own it. The kids in our neighborhood, starting to get kids around here. We go down there and play baseball. We go down there. Go. I'll have twenty, thirty kids down there playing baseball. They, they're not breaking into cars, they're not stealing, they're not doing drugs, they're doing something good. My wife and I would sit there two or three times a month and have a cookout. That's all we do. We've been trying, trying, trying to make this place look better every time. And like I said, come to the spring, I got probably three hours picking up branches, fixing this little. But this right here is where the property line is for the so-called paper road. Jamie then came down there and ripped those all out. Now. These trees right here that are on my property, they ripped them out. There's a natural spring, two natural springs on this property. We told them about the truck, that's, Jamie says, I don't care. So if they, they destroyed the road, my basement floods. My property floods. And I got black mold in my basement. Nobody cares. Talking to Dan Suddles. He don't. The new guy over there, Mark, whatever, he's supposed to be the head of the Trump County or, or Brookfield trustees, whatever. We can smoke bone over him.
So I guess get to the bottom lines. Is this? Is this a county issue or is this a township issue prosecutor?
Well, I just wanna know how come if, if, if. If it was, if there's, I'm, I'm. If there's any way I can go back and try to get this vacant.
Um, I'm built in, so I'm with the prosecutor's office, and I, I just pulled up my email. I recall this coming through before and, uh, a number of years ago, there was a new section of the road vacation statute that went in. Uh, five, 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 three point zero four, that says the Board of Commissioners is not able to adopt a resolution vacating a road unless the township passes a resolution authorizing it. So I think that, well, I know that's what happened before, to be honest, is that when this application had come through, Brookfield Township was never willing to provide a, an approval to the road vacation. And because it's in an unincorporated township, that's a requirement before the commissioners can do anything. In fact, I think we even got to the point in the county where the commissioners had scheduled a, uh, a viewing of the area, they had to stay and schedule a public hearing, but without Brookfield passing that resolution approving it, the county couldn't go forward. So in, in my opinion, I guess legally speaking, you're, you're real, and again, you know, obviously you're welcome to bring anything to the board here that you want, but really, I think your real first step would be to try to work with Brookfield Township, and if you don't have a lawyer, maybe have your own lawyer, uh, you know, work with you to get some, and it sounds like you're having some, some issues working with Brookfield Township here. But I think that's unfortunately where your first step is still gonna be.
If the county engineer passes it?
Yeah, the, the statute is, is pretty clear that the county commissioners shall not adopt a resolution vacating unless the township passes an approving decision. So it's sort of like the county's hands are tied until that process is complete, township. Uh, now again, you know, we went through the, on the county level, I know what you're saying. It had gone pretty far before with the approvals on the county level, but they can't, the commissioners aren't authorized to adopt that final resolution unless there's a resolution for Brookfield, and that's still never happened.
Well, that's what I'm doing, getting life. Because my parent, like, courts said that everybody uses that road, and they, their, their, their tenants, whatever, can't get into the, all lying. But then I have no, nobody to help me. So now what they're doing is they're tearing up my parkland property. They're tearing up my park, the plowing in my property. I've already spent over five thousand dollars fixing their screw ups. Now I gotta spend more money. I don't have it.
I, my only suggestion from a legal end, just maybe that you'd wanna talk to your own lawyer to see if there's something that they could do to help you out, get some answers from the township. That's, like I said, that's just the legal.
At this point, we don't have any, any jurisdiction.
Right, anything that we would do wouldn't be legal binding.
Wouldn't be effective, yeah.
It sounds like.
Yeah.
Which sucks. I mean, absolutely sucks.
So I did the first time, they fucked me a thousand dollars coming here, and get denied the first time. I mean, if they knew that then, why didn't they just tell me that then?
Did they know that then, or is that what led to the?
This is only twenty two.
Right, but is that what led to the email that gave you the opinion?
I, I, that's my recollection is the lead up to it, and I think there was some hope or expectation, maybe the Brookfield would cooperate with it, and when they wouldn't, that just stopped the proceedings.
Well, that's good. They, they were all cut hole for it in twenty, twenty twenty. When COVID hit is when we were, when we were supposed to do the court thing, I was immediately prepared. That got canceled because of COVID, so I couldn't do it to twenty twenty two, and then it went. Oh, uh, I, right.
Well.
Do you know why, you know why, the reason why they're denying it?
Because they're vindictive. They don't like us in our neighborhood. The police never come to there. The only time the police come there is when you call them for something. Other than that, you don't ever see an officer in our neighborhood at all. You never used to be like that. But now they have all these new, young rookie twenty two, twenty three year olds, like I said, their motto is, I'm tired of becoming down here. They don't wanna do nothing. And when we say something, we get punished. As in tearing up our property, tearing up a beautiful area. Tearing up my, my parking stuff. They just came through their last two, the plow, five feet over on my, on my property, and filed it off for no reason, just being vindictive. That's all it is. That's how this whole thing started, just being vindictive. They didn't do none of that stuff until I was here with, uh, Frank Puda, and when I said that, and I showed them the same pictures of the park being real nice and all that stuff. Then they came and started tearing everything up, saying that they maintained this road, which is a lie. You can, you can come over there, there's people been over there thirty, forty, fifty years living there. They would tell you they have not touched that road in years, and never, never have.
What you're adding is.
Seventy six thirty eight Francis Street, Missouri, Ohio.
Didn't phone up on there too. The way, I wonder if I can look at myself, maybe go over trustee and see the situation, so if there's anything to go. Well, if there is anything you can hold, it's amazing, it's all basically the same. What's the story here? But, thank you, thank you.
Okay. We need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, before we adjourn last meeting, last thing I have is elderly affairs back in October. We disbanded that department, we combined them in with senior levy. Instead of that time, we're gonna move them and Mike Salamoni all in one office. Alex has sent multiple emails to maintenance department, not one thing has been done yet, move them. Over, it's been there to clean out the elderly affairs office or prep it so that we can put those into one thing. And one repeated emails, and it's, it's really not Alex's, he's gotta keep staying on them, but I'm asking for consensus with board. We need to get with ma- maintenance and have them do what we asked them to do back in October. To initiate this move, because right now we have two office spaces, we're we're heating them both, and well, three of them actually. Once we combine them to one, there's gonna be a cost savings with that. We can't do anything until maintenance cleans out this, the office space there. I'm just asking for a consensus of, of one of you so that we can tell maintenance to light a fire on them, to do what they were mandated or told to do back in October.
I don't need a fire on a lot of things.
I would agree. Where do you start, right? So we gotta start somewhere, so.
If we start to work.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, yes, uh, and we can agree with what we're, we're, we gotta get a lot of things moving, but that is one, you know, obviously that should not be very time consuming. I mean, we looked at it, we're not asking for rebuild here, we're just asking for clean, take out, clean up, maybe eventually.
There's something stored there for twenty years that doesn't belong.
And it would make our operations more effective. That, that again is.
Make it more.
That's under normal operating procedures, just get it done.
Yeah, like I said, the last board told them, let's make this move. I just wanna get someone on this new board to reaffirm what we already mind these offices, and let's, let's get moving on that to get it done. I agree. We're good to go. Okay, now, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Sir Bernard?
Yes.